Saying go Crimson Tide, roll tide.
Yeah.
Nope, that's the, uh, that's the mantra of our house here. We're in.
Hurricane is closer to the Crimson Tide than it is to a bulldog, so.
Yep. I get that a lot. Like, people think I'm wearing an Amherst hat all the time.
I did think that's what you're wearing. Is that an Amherst hat?
Nope.
Well, being that we have a quorum, I think I'll, uh, I'll get going. So, um, it is 6:30. Um, and seeing the presence of a quorum of the Amherst School Committee, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:31 on my clock. Um, so welcome to everyone and we'll do a roll call attendance. Uh, so Mr. Demling.
Demling present.
Uh, Mr., oh, I'm sorry. I'm going first names. I think I'll assume we'll use the same rule as the region. Ben.
Ben present.
Irv.
Irv present.
Allison.
Allison present.
And Jennifer.
Jennifer present.
All right. Thank you. For those of you who are at home, the reason that I am, uh, in this role of starting a meeting is because there's a reorganization. There was a recent election in the town of Amherst. We have a change in membership of the committee. And thus, according to policy, the superintendent is the temporary chair until a chair is elected. Uh, and then the chair will then hold elections or run the, facilitate the elections for vice chair. Um, and secretary, which has a different meaning than the regional level, which we'll get into in a little bit, but that's why I'm doing this. I want to say that this meeting is being live streamed at Amherst Media and I appreciate that Amherst Media is trying something new with, uh, live streaming through their YouTube channel, which makes the meeting accessible immediately afterwards. Um, so we'll see how it goes, but I appreciate Alexis. Thank you, uh, and you and your, your folks at Amherst Media for all the work that you do and also trying to expand accessibility, uh, to the larger community. So thank you all. With that, I'll just go into how the, uh, election for chair will be run. So I'll ask for nominations. Uh, if the nomination's seconded, I'll turn to the person who has been nominated. Make sure they're willing to accept the nomination. I'll accept nominations, um, until we exhaust that and then we'll have a roll call vote for who will become chair. You're able to nominate yourself or somebody else for the role of chair. Are there procedural questions before we get rolling with the election? Mr. Demling.
So I assume after all nominations are done, then you would open it up for discussion.
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have mentioned that. Thank you.
All right, Peter.
Are there process questions? It's good. I've got a couple of months left to do this again in Pelham. So, uh, this is not the, not the role I envy. Uh, for whoever, I'm not trying to short sell it, but, um, uh, whoever takes the role, I only have to do it for a couple of minutes. A couple of times a year. So are there nominations for chair of the Amherst School Committee? Um, I'll just go in the order. Hands were raised and the first hand I saw was Irv.
I nominated Alison McDonald.
I second.
Is there a sec? Thank you, Jennifer. And Alison, is that a nomination that you would accept if voted?
It is. Thank you for the nomination.
Thank you. Are there other nominations that we would like to hear? I don't want to do the going once, going twice thing, but I think, uh, I think we'll move forward. And are there, is there any discussion that anyone would like to make, any comments that people would like to make about the nomination that's been made in second? Seeing none, I'll go to a roll call vote. And, uh, again, I'm just going in the order. The squares are on the screen. So, Mr. Demling.
Uh, Demling, I.
Thank you. And, oh, sorry, Peter. I'll assume that Peter and Mr. Demling would vote the same way. Uh, Ben.
I.
Thank you. Irv.
Irv, I.
Thank you. Alison.
Uh, abstain.
Alison abstains and Jennifer.
Jennifer, I.
Okay, thank you. I'll hand the virtual gavel over to Alison to run the next two elections. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm honored to continue to serve in this role. So thank you very much for your, for your support. Um, so now we'll open up the floor for nominations for vice chair. And as we talked about, um, in another committee, the vice chair um, is a, a role that primarily the only stipulated duty of the vice chair is to run the meetings when the chair is not present or when the chair, um, if we're in person, when the chair is remote. And the rest is up to the chair and, um, to the vice chair, what they do with that. Um, I think Miss, uh, Peter had his hand raised first.
I nominate Irv Rhodes for vice chair.
Is there a second?
Second. Jennifer, second.
Second. Um, and Ben, your hand is raised.
Yes, I nominate Jennifer.
I'll second that. Is there any, uh, discussion? Uh, but I should say, um, uh, Irv and Jennifer, first Irv, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
And Jennifer, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
So is there, uh, any discussion before we, um, move to a vote? Jennifer.
I will just say, uh, that I will ask for your vote, um, for my, for myself as vice chair. I think I have a lot of, or I know I have a lot of experience facilitating meetings, um, both in person and on Zoom through, um, through my professional life. And, um, I think this would be a great, um, I, I think I, I would strive to do the best job that I can in, um, serving as vice chair. Um, and Alison and I have worked together in the past on the enrollment working group. I think we have a really good working relationship. So I will ask for your vote as vice chair. Thank you.
Irv.
I would love to be vice chair. I believe that I have not only the requisite, requisite experience, but also have the breadth of vision of the, uh, Amherst community and the schools, uh, that, uh, would allow me to serve as second, uh, to Alison and also allow me to continue to be able to, uh, leverage my expertise on behalf of the children of Amherst.
Any other comments? Irv?
Oh, I'm trying to lower my hand.
Oh. I do believe that Google Meet will automatically lower your hand after, if you don't do anything. I could be wrong, but I noticed that last, um, in a recent meeting. Any other, uh, comments or discussion? Seeing none. Um, I, um, like to move through alphabetical order because I have a hard time finding people's faces on the screen. So I'm going to go alphabetical order by last name. Um, so, uh, Peter.
Uh, good point of order. Could you clarify what we're voting on?
Sorry. Um, we are, uh, it's a great question, actually. I don't think we've been in the situation where we've had more than one. Um, I, I think we have two options. Uh, Mike's raising his hand, so I'll see if Mike has.
Yeah. So, I mean, this is, this is now procedural kind of stuff. So I believe since there was two motions, you would, you would accept the first one and for a vote, and then accept the second one for a vote. I think realistically, people should know that if they vote yes twice, they shouldn't do that. You know, like it's, uh, you know, I guess procedurally it might be, uh, allowed, but I, I, I think there wasn't a motion. I didn't hear a motion other than to accept two different individuals, but not a motion, you know, like I, I think, uh, I'm not a Robert Rules expert, but I think the committee would have to vote on motions that were made and seconded. Not create a move motion unless there was a, someone suggested that as a change for a motion. So I could be wrong though. Again, this is not.
We have two nominations. So now we actually want to make a move to vote on one or the other nomination. Is that, yeah. Jennifer?
Well, um, I know that, you know what? In the past, when there has been a vacancy that has to be voted on, um, that, that, that the individuals who are voting just stated the name of their preferred, uh, the person they were voting for as opposed to a motion for one person that everyone votes on, and then a second motion for another person. So, and, and, you know, we haven't actually made a motion. No one has said, I moved that. We're just nominating people. So I don't know. It feels, I, it kind of seems like it would make sense to just, when your name is called, you know, name the person who you're voting for. It's my opinion.
Ben? Oh. Ben took his hand down. So, uh, Peter.
Yeah, um, so I was just trying to pull up our policy on reorganization. I couldn't find it, but if, if, if I recall correctly, it doesn't specify exactly what happens. Um, yeah.
No, I, I looked.
Um, so, I mean, generally speaking, procedurally, if, if there isn't a specific, you know, so we have a policy that says we've, we follow Robert's rules of order, but um, for this, it doesn't specify, you know, and so it's pretty much, then it comes up to convention of the, of the body. And then in terms of how things proceed, it's really up to the chair with consent, if, if they want to gather consent of the members, right? But ultimately the chair has the, the authority. Personally speaking, I, I think for, for congeniality, I'm open to any procedure. Um, I think, I think everybody here understands that we're, we're electing a vice chair or electing one or the other person. And so you probably have an idea of how you're going to vote in the second one, if, first one. So I think this is not maybe a little tempest in the teapot, but you know, um, uh, I think Jennifer's idea of saying, uh, the person who you would like to vote for vice chair is completely fine and seems equitable to me and doesn't seem biased in terms of who got their hand up first in the, in the ordering. Uh, that's, that's just what I'm comfortable with, but um, that's just my input to the chair for, and other people are free to, you know, share their input.
It's awesome to have a difficult, a challenging decision with first meeting as chair. Yes. Um, uh, so I hear two sort of, um, suggestions to go with the naming of, that, that we vote by naming who we're voting for. And I just want to look at to the other two folks that haven't spoken yet to find out if you're, if that works and is agreeable to you both as well. Ben?
Yeah, that feels like the easiest way to go about it, I think.
Irv.
Uh, what are you asking me?
Um, are you, um, so there's a proposal on the table, um, that, that folks seem in supportive of that we vote by naming the person that we would vote for, for, for vice chair.
Yeah, that's, that seems reasonable, logical and expeditious.
Excellent. So, um, we will move now to a, uh, roll call vote. Um, and I ask that you state your vote when I call your name. Um, and your vote will be, um, for either Irv Rhodes for vice chair or for Jennifer Shaw as vice chair. Um, and actually, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes, well done. Thank you.
Um, okay. So we'll move in alphabetical order by last name. Um, Peter.
Uh, Irv Rhodes.
Um, Ben.
Jennifer Shaw.
Irv.
Irv Rhodes.
Jennifer.
Jennifer Shaw.
Uh, and Alison, um, Irv. I think we have an embarrassment of riches, um, because I, I think that's, uh, I moved quickly, not because it was an easy decision, but just to keep moving, but I, I do think, um, I, you know, it's, we have, we have a high functioning committee already, just on our, we were at another committee meeting that isn't meeting tonight, but, um, uh, I think we would do well with either. So, um, I appreciate the willingness of, of both of you, um, to serve in, in this role. Um, and note that there will be plenty of other roles, um, that, that in fact probably are meatier than vice chair. Um, so I hope, um, folks aren't discouraged by the way this vote went. Um, next, the, we, we do need to take nominations for secretary and, um, with the Amherst School Committee, the secretary role, um, is not necessarily recorder. We still, um, we, we, um, will continue to use, um, the services of, um, Maileen as our recorder. The secretary's role in the Amherst School Committee is as an official member of the Union 26 Committee, uh, Committee. Um, and just because it's our, our organization is very confusing. Union 26 is the superintendency union between Amherst and Pelham. Because Amherst and Pelham Elementary Districts share a superintendent, which is Dr. Morris. Um, and so three of the five members from Amherst serve on the Union 26 Superintendency Committee. Um, and that is the, the chair, the vice chair and the secretary. Um, so that literally is the sole, uh, responsibility of the secretary. So I will open the floor for, oh, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question. Who is the outgoing secretary? I wasn't able to find a name online.
Uh, Carrie Spitzer is the, the former secretary. Thank you. So I will open the floor for, if there's no more questions, um, open the floor for nominations. Jennifer.
I will nominate myself.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there other nominations? Uh, Peter.
I'll also nominate myself.
Second.
Yep. Are there, is there other discussion? Or nominations? Seeing none? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, then we'll move, um, procedural. We'll take the same approach that we did for the vice chair, um, election, uh, or appointment and um, move, uh, roll call, um, and please, uh, state your vote for secretary when I call your name. Um, and the motion is either, uh, Peter Demling or Jennifer Shaw. Um, so, uh, Peter.
Uh, Peter Demling.
Ben.
Jennifer. Jennifer Shaw.
Irv.
Peter Demling.
Who did I? Oh, Jennifer.
Jennifer Shaw.
And I'm the lucky tiebreaker again. Um, and I, my vote is for Peter Demling. Um, I believe we've already called to order, which is our next agenda item. So we'll move on to, um, approving of the minutes. And we were able to get the minutes attached as a PDF for the draft minutes for folks, um, at home to be able to see. But if, uh, school committee members, if you're logged in, you will be, also be able to see it by clicking on few minutes. Are there any edits to the minutes? From December 14th. Sorry, I should have stated that at the beginning. It did have one, but this is more for, um, it's a clarification, um, for, uh, Peter. There was a comment, um, attributed to you, which I think is accurate, but, um, it was on the, under item D, negotiate new regional agreement, um, about midway through there, it says, Demling commented that it may be beneficial to get further clarification from the town council on the process. And I believe you meant the council with an S E L as opposed to C I L, but I'm not sure.
Um, that's a good question. I don't remember exactly because both could be true for different reasons. Uh, let me, let me try and pull up that exact section. I'm having trouble finding it. It's, um, are you looking on the PDF or are you looking on the electronic version?
The electronic version. Um.
Under.
Discussion D.
Discussion D. I mean, I'm okay with it as it is. Cause I, I, if I recall, we were talking about what the town charter requires.
Right, right.
Um, it, it, it may be the other one, but honestly, I, I, I mean, unless we, unless we want to pause and I can go look at the video.
No, no, I think, um, I, I think it's, I wanted to just get your perspective on what you thought you.
I appreciate it, but, um, I, I mean, I don't have a firm recollection of exactly what the difference was, uh, what, what does, which, which meaning I meant to the times. I'm okay with it going as it is.
If there's no further edits, then I will move that we approve the minutes as presented, uh, from December 14th, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by, um, McDonald's second, by Demling, um, and we will take a roll call vote. Peter?
Uh, Demling, I.
Ben?
Ben, I.
Irv? I believe you said abstain, or you?
I abstain. Thank you. Thanks for reading my lips.
Jennifer?
I abstain.
Um, and, uh, Alison, I. The motion carries of three, zero and two abstentions. Um, moving on to public comment, we didn't receive any in the email, um, or on the voicemail. And I don't know, um, if any of the folks that are in the meeting right now wish to speak. If you do wish to speak, I ask that you use the raise hand function. Um, as a reminder, we have a new email address for accepting public comment, um, written public comment that would be displayed on the screen and then posted to the meeting, um, meeting packet, to the agenda packet and the minutes. Um, and that is S C public comment at ARPS.org. Um, and that is the same, the same email address for, um, whether you're writing to the Amherst School Committee or other school committees in the district.
I have two procedural questions. Um, so are we allowing public comment live at meetings now?
We, um, uh, because we are letting the public into the, the meetings, um, and we, we haven't actually made a final decision of, of, about how long, whether we will continue this. Um, uh, but as so long as we do have the public in the meeting room with us, um, then we've taken the approach that we apply the same rules for public comment that we would if we were in person. Namely that if you're in the room with us, then you can speak.
Great, thank you. Um, my second question is just something for you to consider as chair, Alison. When we take votes, um, when we take roll call votes, would you consider varying who you start with? I know you want to go alphabetically, which makes sense, and I would want the same thing, but maybe think about varying who gets to go first in the future. Just an idea to consider.
Sure. With, particularly with our smaller committee, it's easy to, easier to keep track. Um, uh, but I will take that, um, to mind. Okay. Oops. Sorry, I muted myself. Um, so we will move on to the next item, which is superintendent's update, and I will turn that over to you, Mike.
Sure. Um, so, uh, a couple, just, it'll be pretty brief tonight, a couple of quick things, uh, district-wide and a a couple of little highlights going on at each of the three elementary schools. So, uh, unfortunately I was snowed out of the beginning of visits that, uh, Ms. Kylie, Mary Kylie is on this call because she'll be talking about math in a little bit. Uh, and I were taking to sixth grade classrooms to hear from sixth grade students about how they might envision what sixth grade could look like at the middle school. So that was scheduled for, first ones were scheduled for Friday. We had a snow day on Friday, but we have some schedule for this coming Friday, uh, which we're excited about. And some of the other ones are getting rescheduled. So, uh, I'll be eager to share, uh, what we hear from sixth grade students at our next meeting. I was hoping to have some initial feedback, uh, for today, but because the snow got in the way on Friday, but I really appreciate sixth grade teachers taking, you know, time out of their busy schedule to, you know, not only allow Mary and I to come in, but also they've offered great feedback and really developed the questions that we're going to be asking the sixth grade students because they know the students best. So, uh, we're looking forward to that, but, um, snow delayed us a little bit. Um, the other thing I want to share is that, you know, typically this time of year, we would come together as a community for winter band and orchestra concerts. Um, you know, our teachers, our instrumental music folks have been incredibly creative. Uh, figured out innovative ways for students to learn safely. Um, and they compiled the 25-minute recital video so that, uh, you know, the, that the community can still hear the progress that our students are making. It's, it's again, not the same as it, it typically has been, but I think it's, you know, one of the ways that our staff members are making the best of the current context, uh, and still providing information for families and celebrations for families about, uh, student progress. So just wanted to publicly share kudos to our instrumental music folks who have, uh, some unique challenges, frankly, um, space challenges, uh, in terms of the band instruments. There's some additional COVID-specific challenges to work through. Um, instruments that you blow into, get, you know, the, the, the rules are a little more complicated. Uh, and I just, I wanted to publicly acknowledge all of them. Um, Fort River, a couple of years ago, you may remember, for those who were on the committee or following it, had, uh, worked with their PGO and then got a good donation uh, of cross-country ski equipment for their gym program and had a little bit of snow, you know? And so this week they started getting students ready for, uh, cross-country ski, uh, program. I think they're hoping for a little more snow before next week when, uh, hopefully they get it kicked off. This week was much more getting used to the equipment and understanding what students would be doing. But, you know, just another shout out to PGOS and, and other, you know, community groups like AEF and, and folks who really do so much contributing to our school district. And, uh, that's something that's been a Fort River specific project. And, uh, I know the kids are really excited to see the snow and get out on skis. Um, and obviously that didn't happen last year. For our younger students, they have not experienced this, you know, we did a couple of years ago, we did get it going, uh, before the, for the shutdown two years ago. So, um, that was, um, you know, that we're looking forward to that. Crocker Farm has an annual celebration of Martin Luther King Day. Uh, this will be held more virtually again, so that the larger community can participate. That's going to be on Friday. Uh, for those of you who have kids go through Crocker Farm, it predates, uh, anyone's kids on this call, going to Crocker Farm, uh, except, you know, maybe one exception, I'm not sure. Um, but it's been going on a very, very long time, you know, certainly when I came in 2007, eight, it was already a longstanding tradition and great that this school's able to find ways to have that continued again, despite the, you know, challenging context that we're in. Wildwood, and I got to see this up on the walls, um, the other day, completed a project, a fifth grade project called Rules to Live By. And the posters were a culmination of an extensive project that started with reading proverbs from different cultures that gave guides on how to live one's life. Uh, the fifth graders then watched TED Talks and other, found other resources where speakers shared life lessons and they read biographies and considered how, you know, influential people responded to challenges in their lives. Uh, and then the culmination was they created their own rule to live by poster and wrote essays explaining why the rule mattered. And, you know, it's in the front hallway at, uh, Wildwood and it's beautiful. And I'm going to see if I can share um, just the image of it. Let me see how visible this is. Uh, you can kind of make it out. I'll try to zoom in a little bit. Um, but, you know, they, they, they came up with their, uh, their own rules and wrote about why, um, why, why they believed it and how it influenced their life. So just really nice when you first walk into Wildwood to see student work and, and pretty deep, meaningful student work, um, at the school. So I can email that if committee members, uh, would like to see it. I know it's hard to see on the screen because it was kind of a snapshot of, uh, of the board, but they really did, uh, the fifth grade teachers and the students did a fabulous job. And finally, we are working and I believe we'll, we'll probably be able to confirm this, um, tomorrow, but working with, um, the UMass Athletics Department, um, there's an interest they have in connecting with students around Martin Luther King Day and what it means to them. And so we are, we're trying to figure out a way that we could, uh, virtually, you know, we had larger plans for this. Obviously that changed in the last month, but still maintain some connection, uh, to elementary age students. Um, so hopefully more on that by the end of the week, and I can share that electronically because things aren't finalized, but we're trying to, you know, even in this difficult time, trying to connect students with folks in their community, uh, who they would look up to, uh, particularly around critical issues like Martin Luther King, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. Uh, so more soon on that, but, uh, you know, I think there's a lot of ways we are trying to do that. We still are maintaining a focus and allowing outdoor field trips and not indoor field trips. And we're still seeing, uh, teachers come up with really creative ways, even in the winter, uh, for kids to get to different places and to mix it up and, and keep things lively for our students. And that is my update for this evening. And that is my update for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike, for the superintendent? Seeing none. We'll move on to the next item, which is the chair's update. And the only update I have is last month, we talked about the budget coordinating group meeting, which still has not met. But now we do have that meeting on the calendar for Thursday, the twenty seventh of January at eight thirty in the morning. And in December, when we were supposed to meet, we had appointed Peter and myself to be on that. So that meeting is going to be on the twenty seventh. And as a reminder, that's representatives from the Finance Committee, Town Council, Library, and Schools. I can't answer questions about what the specific purpose or topic goal of that particular meeting will be. My limited understanding is that we will continue talking about the guidance that we received from the Town Council on our budget planning and what sort of increase we can work on, work with in planning our budget for FY twenty three. If you do have questions for myself or Peter that you want us to bring into that budget coding group, absolutely. Email just, let's just say, myself, so that we don't break open, open meeting law by having three of us on that. But please, if you have specific questions that you want to make sure get raised during that meeting, send them my way and I'll make sure to include them. Next up is announcements from from the committee. And as just a reminder, this is literally announcements, not discussion items. We do have an agenda item later at the end of the meeting to talk about future agenda planning and items. So that that would be appropriate to have that at that time. So this would be if there's advocacy or other information updates that committee members would like to share with your colleagues in the community. Seeing none. And we'll move on to our new and continuing business. And first up, actually, before we dive into our new and continuing business, I would like to make a proposal that we rearrange the order of this agenda and only move one item. So item G, FY twenty three budget, if we could move that up to right after item D. If folks are amenable to that, because then that item E, what's currently item E Charter School Cost is a natural sort of outflow coming out of the budget discussion. So I'm just going to look around for either thumbs up or head nods that your folks are okay with that. Okay, great. And I'm sure Doug will be happy with that change too. So the first item on our agenda is our goals and norms for the Amherst School Committee. And we talked about putting this on the the agenda for this first meeting because we do have a new group of us. And we haven't been able to, not all of us were at the retreat that was hosted by the Regional School Committee. But having that retreat enables the committee members, including the Amherst committee members, to sort of create and talk about norms and procedures and goals for the school committee for the year. And we're in thinking about sort of our new committee with two new members, which is a significant proportion of a five member committee, wanting to have that conversation with this group of people because we operate on a different calendar. So and also because the it can be intimidating. I'm speaking for myself. When I joined the committee and was one of two members joining and a group of people that had been together and working together on the committee for a while, it was a little intimidating for me when I joined because there was sort of built relation, established relationships and processes and norms that that folks understood. And and you sort of feel like you're kind of learning on the fly. And so I wanted to afford the opportunity for us as a group of five to sort of have that conversation as and create that that new group for ourselves. The the document that's in here is is a draft. It probably, I don't know if I'd label it as drafted. If not, I apologize for that. But it's intended to be a starting point for conversation. And what I tried to do is pull in our policies. We have a lot of policies. And but section B in particular talks about school committee governance and operations. And what I tried to do is summarize across those, those are specific to how we work with each other, how we plan our goals for the year and what are our norms for that. So it's two pages. Some might say it's too long and some might say it's too short. But it's a starting point to talk about how we govern. And actually, I also pulled the structure and some of the language, not just from our own policies, but from the MASC, Mass Association of School Committees Model or Model School Committee norms, and then adapted to our own instance and situation. And so it's not, I didn't write this from scratch, so it was liberal copying and pasting. So there's, there's three main sections, how we govern, how we communicate, and how we improve. And the how we govern is really sort of what what do we acknowledge and recognize as as our role as school committee members? And how we communicate is how we communicate with the superintendent and the and district staff, as well as with each other and with our public. And then how we improve is really focused on is our internal procedures and processes for thinking about how are we keeping abreast of laws and changes? How are we developing ourselves and our understanding of our role and our, frankly, our skills as committee members? And then planning that time for self evaluation and, you know, so that we're giving ourselves feedback for future improvement. So with that, I will open up for discussion or conversation. And I'm curious as to what each of you think about this, this document? If there's ideas that you have for adding, shortening, emphasizing specific things, what stands out to you? And what do you think is difficult or will be difficult for us to achieve that we want to document? Ben?
Yeah, I just wanted to applaud the idea this at a bare minimum, right? Like, like, like you said, you know, coming on to a committee, like I came on singularly to a committee of folks who'd been together and kind of had to like wade my way through this. But I think this is awesome in terms of like kind of establishing the culture of our committee. Because we've been very, I think, anyway, I think we've done a great job in terms of working together. And I don't, it's not always easy or whatever, but it's, I feel like it's great to have it spelled out how we would go about that. And I also like the references back to our actual policies. And I just wanted to shout out the the second part of how we govern, because to me that is the single most important is the, you know, finding support solutions that'll provide the greatest benefit to students. I mean, that's exactly why we're here. And so I just thank you for this, for getting this ball rolling. That's all I have for now. I'll probably have more later when we get the words.
You're muted, Allison.
Thank you. You noted what I forgot to remark was that the the letters after each one is a specific reference to policies that that's pulling from or connected to. Jennifer, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, so is, so this document that is a summary of section B of the policies, is this document new? Like, it hasn't been, hasn't, hasn't existed before?
Correct. It's new and it's a draft, so it's it's not final.
I guess I have a little bit of a different perspective from Ben. I mean, I think this all looks very reasonable and I sort of agree with everything that's with all of these numbered bullet points. But I guess I'm questioning why we need it when we have policies. So like, it's summarizing an existing document or say summarizing existing policies. So is it, is it, is it needed and do we need it? If that said, if you tell me that like, it's a best practice to have a summary of section B and like the Mass Association of School Committees suggests that we do it, then that might be a good reason to do it. But I feel like we have a lot to do as a committee and we already have policies that govern how we interact and how we communicate. I don't think there's anything, there's nothing that I disagree with in this document, but I just, I'm questioning the need for a separate document to summarize an existing document.
Irv, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, I did. I think that when I listen to what Jennifer is saying, she, in some ways, she's suggesting a look at the process for dealing with this. I, on the other hand, think, yes, we have to have a process for adopting this, accepting this part of our practice, et cetera. And I do applaud the effort. And also think it's always good to bring these kinds of things before a committee, especially when you're starting off with two new members. And it also serves to reorient current members as to the duties, responsibilities, et cetera, of the committee. I would really like to take a closer look at this and make additional comments. And then, again, go back to what I said at the beginning in terms of the process of how we are going to integrate this into our practice.
Peter?
Yeah, so interesting. So when I saw this item and then I saw the summary, I didn't think it was a new document that we were proposing, that we should discuss a draft of and write up and then adopt. I found it actually just a really helpful top level kind of table of contents to our existing policy. So I guess, I guess my first reaction was kind of was similar to Jennifer's. In that, so when you go through all the section B policies, there's a lot of them. And if you start reading all of them, it can get a little overwhelming with the detail. And so I thought this was a good jumping off point for like, oh, okay, I want to go in and think about how's the school committee self govern? Okay, I want to go in and think about how do we have collegial meetings? Oh, I want to go in and think X, Y, Z, and then this kind of helps you get there. So actually, I found it good to prep for this meeting in terms of going, like picking up a particular policy that was referenced, then diving deep into that and then think about. So I was more thinking that this was just a, something that would help facilitate a group discussion here of some of these issues. Like the ones that you mentioned, like when you first come on and it can be intimidating. Like I was, I was, one of the things I wanted to, you know, just share is that, you know, one of the hardest things I found when I first started is, is this whole idea of speaking in meetings, right? It's like, when do you speak? What's, what's, what's appropriate to say? What's, what's allowed within open meeting law? And then what is conducive to efficient meetings, right? And I'll be honest, after about five years, I still have a complete answer. But I think it's one of the hardest things for newcomers to figure out, even if you've been watching meetings for a long time. Because, you know, I mean, I did before I started and I still found it hard. And it had nothing to do with the way that, how inviting or not inviting people, people were very welcoming and, you know, supportive. So it wasn't, wasn't issue with that. It was more, there's always so much intense business that demands our attention. But, you know, we can kind of think of orientation as, okay, here's your email and, you know, make sure you take training course and all this. And here's our policies. Okay, now, now we're on to month two and you're on your own. So I always had thought of, and we talked about this a little bit at this and other committees about what are some ways that we can more formally or informally help people onboard in a comfortable way? Because, you know, because the other thing about the norms, when we talk about norms, is, you know, a lot of these structures and protocol are so that we have a predefined way to resolve how we come to a decision, particularly when we, when not everyone agrees, right? And so, and so they're important to, to understand so that, you know, when the rubber does hit the road and like we're talking about something, say that we're all very passionate about and say there is significant disagreement, that we have those, those protocols in place. Yeah, I guess I'm kind of circling around an agenda point, but I guess I didn't, I don't, I don't feel a need, I guess, to like wordsmith a document that summarizes our policies. But but I think it would be productive for us as a group in terms of group dynamics and trying to collaborate productively, even when we disagree, to talk about some of these things. Yeah, I guess, I guess the other thing I'll say, just because it's on the agenda, and I'm not sure when I'll have another opportunity to say it. Is that, you know, I really, and I'll take my cue on this from the self reflection point at the end. I realize that historically, I've talked a lot during meetings. And and I really don't want that ever to feel like I'm trying to, you know, dominate the conversation, you know. It's like I'm constantly, I'm just, just from a self reflection kind of point of view that I want to share with people is that, you know, I'm constantly trying to filter, you know, the X, Y, Z things that I may want to say so that I can, you know, one, keep our meetings efficient and two, respect the fact that, you know, most of the time, it should, it should be everybody, you know, contributing and different ways and all that. But I guess I just, I just wanted to put it out there that I would love to just, you know, make people's onboarding as comfortable as possible, smooth out the kinks. And, you know, really have everybody on the same page in terms of, you know, shared practices and, you know, so that we can be the best committee we can be for the district.
Yeah, I think it's great discussion. And I think, yeah, the purpose of this was more to to frame the conversation rather than to, the purpose of the document, rather, is to frame this conversation, not to have another document or have a, another policy, if you will. But rather to, to start the conversation and have this discussion. Because when, when the Regional School Committee has a retreat, that that's sort of, there's no document necessarily. There's a lot of writing and things, but there's, but the purpose of that is, is the conversation and the agreements and sort of the discussion about how we want to work together and how we want to connect with each other during meetings and conversations. And so this document was really to frame that conversation for this group. Because this is our first meeting as, as the five of us. So, you know, if we want to come back to this at a future meeting to say, oh, you know what I think was really missing on here? Or one of the things that I really want to highlight, that's, that's fine. We can, we can absolutely do that. But I do agree, I don't, I don't think the goal, end goal is to create another document. Though if this is, if this document or some version of it, some revision of it is helpful as an orientation packet or a guideline for how to navigate through that pile of of policies in section B to find the ones that are most important for the, for attending a meeting, that we can absolutely consider that. But I do think the one thing that stands out for me in this, which sort of having gone through our policies, getting up close and personal, I mean, one of the things that we realized, we have that limit on our meetings, that the goal for efficient and effective meetings and trying to stick to our two and a half hour time limit. And one of our policies says we will end by ten o'clock. So there's two policies that sort of, they're not in conflict, but they're really trying to focus on that efficient and effective meetings. And I think that was one that our prior, prior school committee chairs were really trying to focus us on. One of the ones that, that sort of really stood out for me is under the how we communicate, then the, you know, setting the tone for the entire school system. And, and, you know, it's not just about promoting a positive image, but in a positive image, not necessarily to be, you know, everything sunny and happy. But that, that second sentence really stands out to me that, you know, this operating transparently and respectfully, maintaining confidentiality. Those are, those are the things that, you know, we as a, as a group, I think, can, can really have an impact on the image of our, our school district by, by operating, you know, transparently and respectfully. And I think we've been doing that. So but I always find, you know, like renewing vows, right? It's, it's, it's a way of just sort of reminding ourselves that this is what we, we feel is important. So me personally, that's what stood out is I think sometimes it's hard to think how we, how we make an impact during these everyday, these monthly, long meetings. And, and that is how we can, can do that. Are there other thoughts, ideas that folks have had in this discussion? And we will, oh, Peter?
I'll just say briefly, it's like a kind of an action item if anybody wants to. So, I mean, the way, the way our policy is, change procedure is set up is a little complicated with the three districts. So basically, there's a policy subcommittee on another committee that we all serve on. And anytime, any member of the three committees that are affected by most of these policies can submit, you know, a request for a policy to be reviewed. So this is, I found this really helpful, you know, refresher for me for going and reading all the detailed policies we have. So as, you know, as you're going through these and, you know, either refreshing or coming up to speed on, on what our policies are for, for the norms and procedures, if you find one that's like, hey, you know what, we should really take a look at that, then absolutely follow that on to the policy subcommittee. And, you know, or, or the chairs of respective committees and, you know, can bring it up. Like we, we had a big update to public comment a couple of years ago, for example. So, and, and the, the half an hour, two and a half hour thing was a recent one as well. So, you know, they're always updating and, yeah, that's it.
So we'll move on to the next item, which is math curriculum review and update. And as a reminder for this, this is one of the, the goals that we had established for superintendent for this year, is to review the curriculum in light of aligning, in particularly in how it aligns with the, the new curriculum that was instituted a couple of years ago in secondary schools and, and others. So I will turn it over, we have some folks joining us, but I will turn it over to Mike for introducing this topic.
Sure, thank you for, thanks for the introduction. And consistent with the last conversation, Mary and Stephanie could speak at length, much greater length than we've asked them to speak tonight on this topic. But they've consulted an awful lot of information into a pretty, I think, manageable set of slides that they'll present. But I've asked them to be 10 minutes or less, so they're going to roll through this quickly, not because they don't want to go into more detail, but they want to, you know, be able to be consistent with, you know, having reasonable length meetings, but also to promote more dialogue after their presentations that have kind of just presented slides, then exit stage left. So Mary, you should be able to present, to share your.
Yes, I see that, Mike, thank you.
Okay, but I, but I also, as, as Mary's bringing up the slides, I just want to really appreciate Mary and Stephanie's work. We, Mary and I talk frequently about how to, the challenges of her leading this process, her and Stephanie leading this project. In the pandemic, not being able to see people, you know, at the beginning, there was more group meetings that were possible in person. And now, you know, moving to more online settings. And they've just been, you know, shepherding a process along that's critical for the growth of our students, critical for the opportunity gaps that we feel so passionately about in, in trying circumstance. So, you know, I just want to publicly thank Mary and Stephanie for their work. But Mary, whenever you want to bring up the slides, you're welcome to.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. So I'm, I'm Mary Kylie, I'm a former math, high school math and special education teacher. I'm also a former elementary teacher. And I worked as an administrator at the New York City Board of Ed. So those are, those are some of the lenses and the experiences that I'm bringing to bear on our work with curriculum this year. I'm joined by Stephanie Joyce, who is a longtime educator in our district, currently functioning as the Title I District Coordinator. And Stephanie and I are leading this effort together. So I'll share my screen. Okay, we have a little slideshow for you. And you may be wondering why we're engaging in a curriculum review now, especially at such a challenging time. There are a few reasons. The first is that we have some persistent opportunity gaps in our districts at all levels. These may well have been exacerbated by the pandemic. I know Mike has spoken with all of you about the opportunity gaps before. It's a major concern and a major priority in our districts to continue working to address those gaps. And we want to harness all the tools in our proposal. So as has become clear from some research over the past 10 years, curriculum is one of the most powerful of those tools. I'll point you towards some of the research about that in a moment. On a related note, there are much stronger curricular options available in the marketplace today for elementary math than there were the last time we did a curriculum review about 10 years ago. So now's a really good time to be thinking about making a change. Making a change is also expensive, however, as you know. First year costs alone that would be payable to curriculum company can be expected to be between 110, 115,000, plus the costs associated with training teachers. So it's not something a district would enter into lightly. Happily for us, we do have a couple of good possible funding options. The first is using ESER funds. Buying new curriculum is an allowable expense. The second option is a program Desi is sponsoring called Accelerating Mathematics Instruction for Students. It's a competitive program that we're definitely going to apply for. If we were to be approved for that program, then Desi would pay most or all of our first year expenses for our new curriculum. So it's a, quite an opportunity. I promised to share a little bit more about the research and the power of curriculum. I've highlighted here three very interesting studies. The first found that a high-quality curriculum can make a difference comparable to half a year of additional learning for students, that's very significant. I include the other studies because, as you know, we spend a lot of time, energy and money in this district on hiring, retaining and developing excellent teachers. Having high-quality curriculum, as you can see here, can really support and leverage those efforts and make them even more effective. So now I'd like to share with you some of what's been happening behind the scenes on our curriculum review. Before we even got started in the fall, the superintendent set out five guiding principles to help us with our initial sort. The first requirement was that any program we considered needed to be a high-quality, research-based curriculum. In Massachusetts, districts considering curricular changes rely on two screening organizations for readings. One is called Ed Reports, the other is called Curit. The second requirement was that the program needed to provide equal access in English and in Spanish. And I want to say a few words about why that's important or why Spanish is being prioritized in that way. Because of combinantes, we have students in our district who receive math instruction in Spanish. That's not true of any other language in our district. Other languages are supported through tutors and interpreters, but math instruction only happens in English and in Spanish. So the third bullet addresses a priority that's evident in all our district and school improvement plans, which is to meet all students where they are in their learning. Being able to differentiate instruction is at the heart of our educational mission. So any curriculum we invest in needs to support that. The fourth bullet speaks to the fact that robust curricular options need to address multiple modalities. Both print and digital options for instruction are important. Digital options are also important to have in case we ever have to go to remote learning again. Finally, as, and as I mentioned earlier, we want to use this new curriculum to bolster and leverage our professional development efforts. As someone who has taught at both the elementary and the secondary levels, I can attest that elementary teachers have the unique challenge of having to teach multiple subject areas at the same time. We will want our new program of instruction to support and deepen the learning of teachers as well as students. Okay, so once we had our curricular sorting hat, to borrow an analogy from Harry Potter, the next thing we did was to form our Math Review Committee or MRC. The 21-person committee, which will collectively make a recommendation to the superintendent at the end of this process, is broadly representative. As you can see, the committee includes all four elementary schools, including two elementary principals, the middle school and high school depart, math department chairs, elementary teachers and math specialists and interventionists. We have English language learner educators and special educators. We have parents from three schools, as well as the reps from the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee and the multilingual parent advisory committee, and then Stephanie and myself. Okay, so we want to say a few words about our timeline. We have a very compressed timeline. We started working in November and we're hoping to finish by April. We spent the fall reviewing four curricula that met the requirements the superintendent had set forth. Now we're working on identifying two that will be our finalist curricula. So we, we have three at the moment and we're getting down to two this month with the committee. Then they will have six weeks to pilot, to road test those two curricula in selected classrooms. By the end of April, we expect to make a recommendation to the superintendent. You may be wondering how we're going to actually get from these, these curricula, how we're going to cull and figure out what our final recommendation is. And what we're, what we're planning to do is to use our Math Vision, which you probably received in your packets for this evening. We, we developed a Math Vision at the start of the process and the Math Vision is guiding our deliberations. It's a vision of how we want math teaching and learning to look in our district. So the three curricula that we have now, we're looking at in light of that Math Vision. So the first curriculum, curriculum that we're looking at is called Eureka Math Squared. Eureka Math Squared is a reworking of a curriculum that's been around for a while called Eureka Math. Eureka Math was criticized for not having great teacher usability and student access. So this curriculum has been reworked and is supposed to be much better. It's being piloted for the first time this year. So this is the first year of Eureka Math Squared. Second curriculum that we're digging deeply into is illustrative mathematics, also called IM. Illustrative has had a, a very well-regarded middle school math program, was programmed for grade six through eight, that's used in many districts in Massachusetts. This year, they're rolling out for the first time an elementary, a K through five curriculum. So that's another one that we're giving a very careful look at. And the third curriculum is called iReady. And iReady has received top ratings. So in what I was mentioning a few minutes ago, what we're trying to do is figure out how well each of these curricula would allow us to implement our Math Vision. And the Math Vision is quite lengthy. So what we've done is the committee has identified five priorities distilled from that vision that we're really focusing on in particular. The first one, we're looking to see the extent to which a particular curriculum is mathematically rich. That means a number of things, but most importantly, it means that it's balanced. There are three key pieces to math education. One is conceptual understanding. The second is procedural fluency and the third one is problem solving. So we want to make sure that all of those three legs of the stool, as it were, are addressed. The second key priority is the extent to which it upholds equity and access for all learners. So the curriculum has to be both culturally responsive and educationally responsive to, to students and our families who are tremendously diverse. The third key priority is the extent to which it's, it facilitates data-informed teaching and learning. Data about student learning can take many forms. It can be as simple as a little exit ticket at the end of a lesson to see what students have understood. But we want a curriculum that has this kind of data taking, taking built in. Because timely information on student learning is what enables teachers to pivot as needed with individual students. It also supports data cycle work in our schools. The fourth priority is usability. It's no good to have a great program if it can't easily be accessed by students and teachers. And the last one, as I mentioned, is facilitating and supporting teacher growth. Because when you have a good curriculum, it's not only the, the students who grow, it's also the teachers. Teacher understanding of math can be greatly facilitated by an excellent curriculum. Okay, so that's our introduction. I'm going to ask the superintendent if he would like to add anything and also to ask Stephanie to join me in answering questions that you have.
I think that was, thank you, Mary. I think that was really comprehensive. So I think in the interest of time, I think, you know, I'll turn it back over to the chair to see if there's questions that Mary, Stephanie or I could, could assist with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Thanks for providing that in advance as well. It was helpful to be able to read through it before tonight. Questions from the committee for? Irv?
Thank you. I, I really appreciated that presentation. It was very clear and thorough and outlined a lot of great things. And one of the things that, the first question that came up in my mind was, you are suggesting this as a curriculum, math curriculum. And so the first thing I looked at, well, how does this align with, with the proposed sixth grade move to the middle school? And then how does that middle school look at that? And in other words, you know, I, I, I am an educator by training, a business person. But one of the things when I look at curriculum is that you look at it down through a long, long lens that looks at the end. And that end would be high school in terms of how we, what we want our students to know, to understand, to believe in, to be able to perform. And so that all goes all the way back to kindergarten. And then the kindergarten curriculum then is aligned all the way up with that. So my first, first question is, how is this going to align with that? With the sixth grades to middle school and high school?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rhodes. It's, it's, it's an excellent question. Mike, did you want to jump in or?
Yeah, why don't I start? If that's okay, Mary and Stephanie. So sixth grade actually doesn't use the, sixth grade was in the prior process to shift the curriculum at grade six through 12 because curriculums aren't designed K to six anymore. And so they're relatively unaffected by this. But to your larger point, they're directly affected because our K to five curriculum really does need to align with what we're doing six through 12 for all the reasons you indicated. So, you know, on one hand, it's not a direct part of the process. On the other hand, right now, we are ill-aligned. You know, since we made those connections six through 12 and the six through 12 curriculum actually is much more closely aligned than it was in my 20 years and 21 years in the district. I mean, we, we seem to never had those aligned very well. We want to make sure that the K to five experience facilitates that smooth transition to the secondary math, which based on a curricular approach, always starts in sixth grade. But Mary and Stephanie, if you would like to jump in with anything further, please do.
Okay, I'll start, Stephanie, and then you can, can join in as well. So I think a really important piece is even to have K five aligned and to be, because math is a sequential subject and understandings are built sequentially, as you're saying, Mr. Rhodes. So right now, we don't have a situation like that in our schools. People are using, there's a lot of teacher-created materials. Teacher are using, some teachers are using our, the curriculum that is technically our official curriculum, which is everyday math, many are not. So students are getting very disparate experiences and that really doesn't support excellent math learning.
I would say so.
Yeah, so that the first piece, I think, is horizontal alignments within grades and across schools and within the K five band. And then six through eight is all using the, the new this year. Actually, the same company that creates illustrative math, they're using the Desmos math curriculum. It's very problem-solving based, has a big digital component. It's, it's going very well so far. And the high school, I was actually involved with selecting the curriculum that's in use at the high school right now, the CPM curriculum. And all of these, what we're looking at in the elementary, because I, it's been very much a part of the secondary math, is a problem-solving emphasis. We don't want kids just sitting down and scribbling on worksheets. You know, it's really, they need to understand the math and have their procedural fluency built on conceptual understanding and to apply it to real-world situations. and to apply it to real-world situations. So I think that strand is definitely one that we want to see aligned from K through 12.
Jennifer?
So I guess I have two, I have two questions. I guess one is ultimately, is this body going to like vote to approve a selection once the, once the, once the committee decides on the one? Is that, is that something that's in our future?
Yes. So we make a recommendation, we meaning the committee. The review committee will make a recommendation to the superintendent. If the superintendent accepts it, then he will, he will go to you. And the school committee makes the ultimate decision.
And that's going to be April-ish.
Well, Jennifer, I could also add that we will not be voting. We've been very clear all along, we're not making a decision as a committee, that we're going to have a consensus process so that we can have an alignment of thinking in terms of the priorities and our vision. But we'll be basically making a recommendation to the superintendent and on to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And my next thing is just about, about, I was a math major as an undergrad. So this is a topic that's very near and dear to my heart. But I feel like many adults, like many adults in my peer group and adults in general just are afraid of math or think they're not good at math. And I feel like some of that comes back to maybe their math experience and their K through 12 experience. And so I hope that, and some of what you said, Mary, is very, is very promising to me in terms of, I hope that we can create or we can develop students who grew up to be adults who are not afraid of math. And it's sound, and some, from what you've said, it sounds like that's, those are things that you're taking into consideration. But along those lines, I feel like math, I feel like the topic brings out something in, in, in community members and parents who are, they get very passionate about, about them not being able to understand their students' math in a way that other, that maybe other subjects don't bring that out in, in parents and families. So, and which of course is not a reason for us to, to, shouldn't be the basis of our decision on anything, but just maybe should be something we think about when we communicate the new curriculum. So I guess I'm just wondering of the, you know, the three programs you're looking at, do you, I guess, do you, I don't, I don't know there's a way to answer this, but like, do you anticipate that like, parents might object or be, or have strong feelings or, or just be concerned about changing the way their students learn math? I don't know how, I don't, I don't know if I said that very well, but just something I'm thinking about is how families and parents will feel about a new math curriculum.
I think that family connection is very much a part of all of our three finalist curricula. It looks a little bit different with, which each of the three curricula, but it's very much a piece. There's a strong awareness of that needs and so, and then we also in our vision are thinking about a multi-year rollout process really that very much involves communication with families and family math nights and that sort of thing. Because I agree with you, it's, it has to be a partnership to overcome this, what I think really is a bias in our culture of, against math, to some extent, a fear of math. I think it's, it's very profound.
And when Mary talked about usability, well, that's really critical to our educators. We included families in that usability factor as well. One of the curriculum we're looking at, in fact, has a video that accompanies every lesson in eight languages. So those are the kinds of features that we're taking into account.
Before I circle back for second comments or questions from, from members, I just want to look to see if there's other members that haven't yet spoken with questions. Peter?
Yeah, so I noticed you didn't mention MCAS, which is awesome. So thank you for not making that a driving force. But I am curious if, you know, since kids have to take it, you know, whether you've thought about alignment and to what degree it ought to factor into the process. The other thing I was curious about is, is how we actually, in your evaluation process, measure things like upholds equity and access? And I'm sure that every curriculum is going to want to promote that as something that they do. But, but for something like, you know, Eureka Math Square, that's, that's only in its first year, you know, obviously doesn't have a lot of track record, at least in its current form. And I don't know anything about it, by the way, so I'm not saying anything positively negatively against it. I'm just wondering in terms of things that aren't so easily quantifiable, how you actually gauge, you know, your, your preference on those, those kinds of more qualitative, but very important things?
I can start. I think, I think you're right. We've had a lot of discussions around this. We don't have a rigid numerical scale and we've spent time talking about, what does it mean? What does equity mean? What does access mean? And I think there's some agreement on the committee that, about some of the elements. For example, when you're talking about cultural responsiveness, children need to see themselves in the curriculum. It's important, who are the characters represented in the curriculum? What are the, the life situations represented in the curriculum? How, to what extent is language, as Stephanie was saying, facilitated? That, that's a piece of it. The educational responsiveness, when you, you know, when you talk about access, what does access mean? Some of it's around things like language and family contact, you know, are families able to be involved with this? But also, it's, it's about all sorts of things. Like one of the curricula has wordless videos, which is a really interesting feature. So that students, language is taken out of the, the process, really. The student sees the math situation in a, in a wordless video. But also, when you talk about access, we're talking about access for learners with many different profiles. So we, we need to have a curriculum that can enable a teacher to work with students who are far, who are working at grade levels above the grade that they're in, students who have not yet attained those grade level standards, students with disabilities. We have to have, we have students who are English learners. So it's a very complex puzzle. And what Stephanie was saying, it's, it's not something we expect to be able to quantify easily. But we are working towards a consensus on the part of the committee so that we get everybody to the point where at least they can say, even if this wasn't the one I would have chosen, I can, will get behind this curriculum and do my best to make it successful.
I think one quantifiable feature, Peter, that we, we've been looking at is, what is the point of use of that equity and accessibility? Is it something you have to go searching for as a family? Is it something you have to go searching for as an educator or a student? Or is it there embedded in the lesson? So that's one thing that we're really looking at, taking note of.
I have two questions. One is quick, but it leads into the second, which is, the, your, your timeline suggests that you want to make a recommendation by the end of April. When would be the target for implementing and rolling this out in classrooms?
So thanks for that question. One of the important factors in trying to come to a recommendation was when the superintendent could consider that and in a timely way and be able to possibly present that to, to your school committee. And then for us to have weeks of time late in the spring, when implementation professional development could be presented to our K to five teachers in preparation for implementing in the fall of 2022, with ongoing professional development next year.
Great. And which that segues nicely into my next question was, because you did talk about the professional development support, for significant professional development support being one of the key criterias. And which I'm glad to hear, because I remember, and my question goes into sort of, what is the beyond year one support? Because I recall in a, when we, when another committee was looking at the six through 12 curriculum and we had received a report from a consultant. And I think professional development was, was an area that we'd fallen down on or hadn't done as well as we had hoped or could have done in sort of rolling out that, that, that curriculum. And then you also talked about that the current curriculum is not even being uniformly used across classrooms. And so that, that will be, I worry and I wonder, how are we going to try, try to encourage and support teachers use this curriculum consistently, once we've adopted, once we've adopted a new curriculum? And ensuring that it's consistently applied and used across classrooms within a school and across schools across the district?
So it's a key question. It's really, you know, I think it begins with buy-in on the part of the people. The, the forming the committee, we were very mindful of that. We wanted a very broad-based committee to get buy-in from the very beginning. But I, but I, I think you're right, Ms. McDonald, it, it's a multi-year process. And one thing, for example, I've heard the superintendent say is that next year, teacher observations, when principals are going in to watch teachers, teacher observations will all, in the elementary schools will all be in math. So, you know, that gets more, that gets, you know, so the administrators will be observing the teachers over and over again, very closely. I mean, all these kinds of things that we can do to promote deep knowledge of the curriculum and, and buy-in. But it's an ongoing process. As you say, I think they'll have to be, we'll have to identify upfront time during the next couple of years when teachers are going to continue to deepen their knowledge of this curriculum.
I think it's, it's been a factor that's actually been kind of exciting for us. Because for those of us who have sat through what we call one-and-done trainings in our district or any district, where a company comes in and trains you in an afternoon and says, okay, go at it. It's not enough. We all know it's not enough. So the companies have really grown into developing real portfolios for professional development. So there would be substantial implementation professional development this spring. So educators could have resources if they wanted to look at them and dip into them this summer. We'd be prepared to start in the fall, but there would be some ongoing PD that would be available, both from companies. One company, for example, offers professional development. How do we deepen children's thinking about learning? Another company has offered to come back and work with the data platform to help us use that more efficiently and work with the data. So there's a number of layers of kind of PD that are open to us, as well as our math specialists who could be coaching in classrooms too.
Great, great. Erv, if it's okay with you, I see Ben's hand up and he hasn't had a chance to say anything. So I'm sort of leaning towards letting Ben, calling on Ben first. Ben?
Yeah, so, so I, I kind of had a thought that was spurred by the, the concept of like representation, seeing yourself in the curriculum. And I was kind of wondering, like, so I'm thinking back to when my oldest was at Crocker, along with Dr. Morris there. I remember there being like, it was a math book specifically where there was a, an attempt, I feel like, to kind of speak to our culture where there was like an example of, you know, if Jeff has five hip-hop CDs and Joe has three hip-hop CDs. And like, my, my son's first reaction to all of this, the, the attempts at representing him in the book was, wow, that is so corny. And I have no interest beyond, and it was, when they took out the representation is where he actually was engaged. I was just wondering, like, do you guys have any sort of like, I don't know, I guess, plan to get feedback from, from students, from varying students to see what their kind of reaction is to it? Because I always feel like, like us adults have these great ideas and, you know, we think them through and then we bring them and present them to children who are like, that's, that doesn't resonate.
It's such a good point that you bring up, Mr. Harrington. It really, so we, we're definitely planning to, we're having this six-week pilot in selected classrooms. And part of that will be collecting input and feedback from students. We're going to be encouraging other teachers and students from other classes in the school to come and observe as well while these curricula are being piloted. But I agree with you. I think the street data from, from students is super important to collect. So we'll be doing that to as great an extent as we can. It'll, I think it'll be during this pilot period. But that's definitely a key element for us.
Okay. Erv?
Yes, three things. One, in terms of your pilot program, you're going to be piloting three different curriculums, is that correct?
Just two.
Just two. All right. So what, the question is, how are you going to design your data collection methods to determine which one of those is going to be most appropriate for A, the students, B, the teachers, and C, A, B, and C? What's going to be most appropriate? What are, you know, what's your research design? What, how are you going to do that? The second is, is really, for me, when, when you start describing the curriculums, I really would like to see presented, what are the outcomes that you're looking for? In terms of the students, at the end of the day, at the end of the first year of this, what do you want them to know and understand and demonstrate? And, and is that something that you would be able to communicate with the parents? Hey, we're, we're, we're adopting this new curriculum. And at the end of first, the first year, second year, the third year of your child's taking this curriculum, here's what they will know, understand, be able to demonstrate, et cetera. Communicating that. And then the third thing is culturally responsive. You know, I'm, I'm really layering of those terms on and for a number of different reasons. Because sometimes those terms mean that we're going to water down the curriculum according to some kind of predetermined prescribed of identification of, of multicultural kids as being less capable. And therefore, doing it in such a way that does not appreciate that they are going, are able to learn just as well as everyone else. I, I get hit with that and I see it and it, and I've seen it where it gets implemented and those kids get shortchanged in one way or another. And I would not want to see that happen. So I would really appreciate if you could respond to me in relationship to those three things.
Sure. I think I'll go in reverse order, if you don't mind. So the question about equity, I, one of the things that when Mike and I were discussing this with the principals and I said to them, this is equity work. Having a first-rate curriculum that we can put in place in our schools is equity work. That's what it is first and foremost. I, you know, kids need to have an opportunity to achieve at the levels at which they're capable. And, and it's not, and no watering down. I totally agree with you. As, and as, when I was teaching at the high school, and so it wasn't, Mike and I've had this conversation before, before this year. And I said to him, we have to do some work on the elementary curriculum. We need a different elementary math curriculum. Because we need kids to come with a different level of readiness when they hit high school. So a rigorous curriculum is what all our kids deserve. So I'm totally with you. No, no watering down. And the second thing you were asking about was, was really about standards. All of these, the curriculum that we're looking at, and that's what the superintendent said from the very beginning, these have to be curricula that, that meet the Massachusetts content standards for learning at each grade level. The, the two organizations that we looked at first to see what their ratings were, the Ed Reports is a national nonprofit that rates curricula. And the second one is called Curit and that's Curriculum Ratings by Teachers. That's a DESI-sponsored organization, so that's more Massachusetts-specific. But they go through standard by standard in terms of what kids are supposed to be learning every year and make sure that these curricula meet those standards. But I agree with you. I think these need to be communicated to families as well. Families have the right to know, this, these are the content standards we're going to be working on with your third grader. So, and, and that's an, that's ongoing work. But, and the first thing, your question about the decision, it's, it's going to be challenging. Do you know, we don't, I wish we had a, something we could feed all of the input into and come out with the right answer. But, but obviously we won't, right? So we're going to, we're going, we're looking at, the whole big committee is looking at these curricula. What we're doing is we're taking standards. For example, I'm in a group that's working on understanding of fractions. And how do you, how do you know two fractions are equivalent? And we're looking at that, that particular content standard across the three curricula. So that's like one of the things we're doing. How is it presented in Eureka Math Squared? How is it taught in illustrative? How does I Ready approach that concept? And actually digging into that level of detail. And then we're looking at what supports are available for families, what supports are available to teachers. So there's a lot of digging in, then we're going to have, and simultaneously. Then we're going to have, and simultaneous with that, we're going to have the piloting, right? So that's going to give us a different view. These teachers who are piloting are going to be trained by the curriculum companies to implement the curriculum. And then they're going to do one unit of study, and that's going to provide us with some different information, including input by students. And then at the end of this, we're hoping honestly that, that a clear choice will emerge. But if it doesn't, it's going to be challenging. We have, the, the good thing, though, is that we have, we, at that point, we, we have three very good options now. And at that point, we're going to have two excellent options. So I think honestly, we're going to end up with a good one.
Thank you.
Does, does that answer your questions?
Yeah. Could I, could I jump in? I am conscious of time, but I'd, I'd like to just add to what Mary said very briefly. So I think, you know, I think to your question, Irv, you know, I've been part, brilliantly, I've been part of curriculum process that, that overly focused on a voting or quantitative aspect to be the determining factor. And we have made some bad decisions, um, based on, uh, that. And really what we need to do is, one, which is Mary's already done, is what's, what's the best in class? What are other districts that we aspire to be like, have similar demographics? What are they using? Second is, what do experts in the field rate as the highest quality curricula? Third is, how do we get a diverse group of stakeholders to get involved and offer feedback, um, that's both qualitative and quantitative? Four, how do we field test it with our students and our teachers and see how it goes? And, and really you get to combine those somewhat qualitative, somewhat quantitative factors. Uh, I think when, you know, kind of we've done processes that have had more, some might say cleaner, you know, rating scales and everyone just votes and, and it's all numerical. It really allows, you know, bluntly, a more political process to play out. And what I really appreciate about what Stephanie and Mary's approach is that we're getting both qualitative and quantitative feedback experience and also looking what's working other places, uh, and how it's rated by national experts. Those are all critical components and I think all of those things matter. So it's not that we don't want feedback, qualitative feedback from folks, and even quantitative in some ways. But we really want to put it into a, a larger pot of, uh, how we make decisions in the district. So it doesn't, we don't get swayed by the moment. Uh, Irv, you've been in Amherst a long time. You know that we, we, we can sometimes get swayed in the moment. And we want to really make sure that we're utilizing the funds we have and produce, providing the best resources to give our students the best opportunities for math, which we know is a gateway to all sorts of future courses when they get to middle school, high school, not only in mathematics, as well as careers, if you look at, you know, future careers. So for us, it's a really critical decision. So we're trying to take in, you know, feedback from our local community, feedback from other similar communities, uh, as well as experts in the field, uh, to, to put it all together. So it's not as nee, easy as some other processes I'm in, but I think the outcome will be much, much, but much improved. And I think it'll be better for our kids.
Two things. One is the comfortability of this teachers with it. And anyway, the comfortability that teaches with their curriculum and the comfortability of the curriculum with the students.
I'm going to, um, attempt to move us on, um, because we, we have several more items. But I, this was a really rich conversation and, and really helpful, um, discussion and presentation. So thank you, um, I think on behalf of the whole committee, thank you both for coming in and speaking with us. And I hope that, um, should any of us, um, on the committee have follow-up questions, that you be open to them if we direct them to Mike for, for response. Because I know, I don't want to, I don't want to shut down the conversation, but we do have other items to talk about tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, bye.
Great, um, so, um, moving on to our next item is the, uh, school building, uh, committee update. Um, and I will look to, um, Ben and Mike for our committee members, um, representatives, um, for that update.
Ben, would you like me to take a shot and then you jump in? Sort of been our, our partnership deal the last couple of times. So, uh, I'm going to keep this, I am conscious it's eight oh four and we have a lot of meaty agenda items left. So I'm going to try to just, you know, summarize where we are with things and open up for questions. So one, I just want to continue to thank Kathy Shane, who's doing a fabulous job as chair of the committee. Uh, as things get busy and heat up, she's meeting every challenge and just, I think deserves that public acknowledgement. You know, our goal is really looking at that fall 2026 and getting, you know, doing all the things, going, you know, backwards from there that will get us there, because we know there's a lot of obstacles and barriers that we know of. And then there's going to be ones that emerge, uh, throughout the process. And then that's really our intensive focus. The last couple of weeks in December, there were two site visits from the team of architects. They were doing, looking at sort of the inner guts of the building. They also did soil testing and things that Mr. Ben, excuse me, probably could describe in, well, assuredly can describe in better detail, uh, than I could. But, um, they, they were able to do a, a number of tests, uh, on the site, looking at, um, buildability. And, you know, you can build on any site. It's really a financial, uh, and operational question, uh, based on, you know, the factors at play. So I think at our next meeting, they'll likely have, uh, more data, um, to be able to share with the committee and the community uh, on the two sites that are being looked at. Uh, and I thank them. I think one of the days was like December 30th and, uh, our facilities director, you know, spent most of the day with them, walking them through, uh, both the inside and outside the building. The other one was, uh, a little before the break. So we appreciate their, their, um, quick work to get out, get out here and get the data they need to be able to add that to the analysis. To this afternoon, there was actually, uh, MSBA kickoff meeting. So, uh, it involved on our side, um, the town side, uh, town manager, myself, Sean Mangano, the town graphics director, um, and Kathy, uh, as well. And it's really trying to, the, the goal of the meeting is to share what's coming in the feasibility stage and answer any questions. And a critical piece that I wanted to share with the committee was that a question came up from the MSBA, given the votes of both this body as well as the regional school committee, kind of, there was a question of why they, we, why we would study an enrollment design, uh, that included sixth grade at the elementary level, because that decision's already been made by the regional and elementary school committee. So we, you know, we shared the documents with them, the, the kind of minutes, um, thank you, Meleene, uh, very clear minutes from this fall where those minute, those votes were taken. And, uh, they are going to think and get back to us, but they are thinking of, uh, they do need to have more than one design enrollment and they are thinking about, uh, what a Fort River-only K-25 design enrollment might be. So that's not resolved, but they asked a lot of questions and led in that direction. So I'll certainly keep the committee and the community updated if we do go, there is actions taken by the MSBA. But, uh, they're not interested in, uh, asking the consultants to study a design enrollment that includes a grade level that won't be in the elementary level at that time. But they do need a second design enrollment. So that was some of the dialogue and conversation today. I, I don't think it's a particularly viable, um, for the community option to think about. It'd be a very small school, um, that we'd be talking about. So I'll wait to hear back anything official about the MSBA, but I did want to communicate with the committee that, uh, there was kind of dialogue about what design enrollment's made sense, given the actions of, of this and another school committee. The last thing I have is the educational plan. So David Stephen, who is on, I think, seven of the eight, I think, I think that's right, Ben. Applicants, uh, teams as the educational planner. He started his work, he met with our leadership team involving the principals of all three elementary schools and some central office staff on Friday, on the snow day, to gather their input. And there's two community meetings set up, one this Thursday, so two days from now, eight thirty to eleven thirty, and one on Wednesday, January 26th, from six to nine in the evening. The idea is to have one morning and one evening to better meet families' needs for some, for some families, that morning time will work well. Their kids are dropped off at school and they may have flexibility to join that. For other families, the evening, uh, was a better option. So if you miss one, you know, you can go to the other. It's not like, uh, sequential series, it's two opportunities to offer feedback on the edu- educational plan and just encourage people to come. If you can't make the whole time, that's okay. We know it's long meetings. We encourage people to come where they can. And he's trying to, David, that is, is trying to plan for some interactive dialogue throughout the presentation. So it's not like two hours of David talking and then, you know, offer feedback at the end, but trying to integrate. He's bringing in some images from other schools that he's been involved with to gather feedback from the community. Uh, also coming up a couple of weeks after that will be meetings more on the feasibility side, not the ed plan side, but the feasibility building side of things. Uh, and I would look out for those dates. I think Kathy will release them soon. Those will be full building committee meetings, um, those forums, because they're, um, they're not specific to the ed plan. They're specific to the larger project. Uh, I think that's where there'll be a lot of communication on, for instance, the results of the site testing, uh, current conditions, those types of things. That is my condensed summary, but Ben, I'm sure I left out some things or, uh, some things need elaboration, so I'll turn to you.
Yeah, I mean, that's, your notes match my notes pretty much there. But yeah, I just wanted to double down on the, uh, the Kathy Shane shout-out there. Like she's, she's done a ton of work and been very dedicated. So I just wanted to send my appreciation to her.
I, I had a question on the, um, uh, on the forums, uh, because they, if school committee members want to participate, because we'd be talking about the ed plan envisioning, presumably we'd have to post that as an Amherst school committee meeting, correct? I'm sorry, I just, this is just occurring to me now as we were talking about that. I'm, I'm going to guess it might not be likely, but I think, but that, that's a question that, um, particularly the evening one, we, that might be something we need to consider.
Yeah, so it's too late to post for the Thursday meeting, um, because that, that forty-eight hours has, window has closed. But certainly we can post, I think you're right to be thinking about it. Um, and the evening one, I'm going to put a note to myself. We can certainly post it as an Amherst school committee meeting if we don't have the quantity. You know, if there's no quorum, there's no quorum and there's no problem. But I'm writing a note to myself, um, to make sure that gets posted as such.
I think, um, I was hoping to attend the Thursday one. So if there's two other school committee members that also are planning, then, um, then let's figure out our plan so that we don't end up inadvertently with a quorum on Thursday morning. Um, the other thing that I wanted to note, so again, calling out, um, Kathy Shane. She and I have been talking about, um, the, the website. And one of the things that she's tackling next, I think, or the committee is tackling next is the FAQ. Um, and so, um, which I think right now has little, if anything, on it. Um, and so, um, what I wanted to, um, pass on from, from my conversation with Kathy was that she would be interested in hearing school committee input on, um, what questions, um, we, from our perspective, we, um, would like to see included on the FAQ. And we can talk about that now, or we, um, again, in the interest of time, it might be simpler to just, send those along to, um, to Kathy directly. Peter?
Okay, a quick comment on the quorum issue you just brought up. So, um, we don't necessarily have to post it as a school committee meeting so long as, uh, a quorum doesn't show up and start deliberating about stuff. In fact, I think it might be better not to post it as a school committee meeting. And the, the example I'm thinking of is when we did the listening sessions a couple of years back for the, um, the consensus proposal, we had multiple school committee members, quorums chilling up for those. But I don't, unless I'm really misremembering, um, I don't think we posted those as school committee meetings, because we, we just attended and, and we were listening. And, um, even if we wanted to ask questions, like informational questions at these, um, at these sessions, it's fine as long as we don't start, you know, talking, sharing opinions, you know, saying this, this is good, this is bad, you know, deliberating. So, and I just think it might be confusing for the public if, if it's, if it's a school committee meeting. I, I don't know. I, I will only go with whatever people feel is clearest. And, and then just a couple of, of things. Mike, if we could maybe prominently advertise these meetings in, uh, the weekly superintendent update. I know it's, it's, it's too late for the Thursday one, but for the one coming up on the twenty-sixth, um, that would be good. I mean, I think right now, um, the surge of the pandemic is, is rightly dominating most people's attention. So it's going to be hard, obviously, to get, um, get people to pay attention to, to things right now. But, um, I think whatever we can do would be, would be helpful. And then, uh, for a couple of other things that you've brought up in your, in your update, the K-25 in enrollment only at Fort River and having to study that second design enrollment. I think it, if, if that's an absolute requirement of the MSBA process, right? That we can't get around, that we have to study, uh, a solution for one building. I, I think of the building committee, this is just feedback if you take the building committee. You should, should make it a point to be very clear with, about that with the public, right? That we haven't, that there, there isn't suddenly some ground swell of desire to not take care of both buildings. Because I think that would, for, for much of the public that isn't paying attention to every single step, that minute step in this process, that could be kind of confusing. So I think that's, that's pretty important, particularly when we've had, you know, one school or two school confusion in past MSBA projects. The, the more we get out and had, had that and clarify that, um, the better. And also, so you mentioned fall twenty-sixth, and, and I understand that, you know, from the past meeting that we had with the school building committee, that that's the target open date. And, you know, I and some others had asked, you know, is, is there any possibility of moving that date up? And, and I didn't, I don't know whether you've gotten a sense recently from school building committee meetings, whether that's, is, is it dead in the water that absolutely, no, we, we can't do anything other than fall twenty-sixth? Or, or are there still, uh, possibilities exploring earlier open date for the building? Sorry.
Did you want to respond to?
Yeah, so I, I think I heard three things. So one, in terms of communication, it was in the newsletter, um, this past Friday. It also was emailed out by Kathy to try to denote, get people's attention, because people get a lot of emails from me and Debbie. So there was a decision that it came from Kathy's email and it went to all elementary school families, um, Monday. So additional reminder that way. On the meetings and posting, uh, when we did the engagements and it, that you're referring to, there were really clear directives that school crew members can only answer factual questions and not offer opinions. What I thought I heard from Allison, and I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Allison, but the, what I heard was perhaps an interest in participating, like being a full participant. And, and it was a really clear directive, uh, at those other ones not to do that. So I think that's for you all to sort through, but I think that'll determine the answer. Uh, and then on the last one, um, sadly, uh, I, I don't think there's, the, the deeper we get into this, the more I don't see as much wiggle from fall twenty-two-six. Based on what I hear from MSBA, because I was in that meeting today and we did talk about timeline, as what I hear, as well as what I hear from the consultants. They're aiming, what I heard the consultant say today is they're aiming to be ahead of schedule. So everything MSBA sets up, they want to be ahead of. So perhaps they can make up some time that way. But, um, uh, you know, I think, I think it'll be a challenge. I'll, I'll leave it at that, perhaps.
I see.
Allison, if I put words in your mouth, I apologize. Um, I really was just going off how I heard you say it.
Yeah, yeah, no, um, and it's a great, a great conversation, because my understanding is that these workshops are actually much more workshops as opposed to listening sessions. And I think that, so it, it's a great, it's a great consideration. I think the, the, the setup, as I understand they're going to be set up, it really is more, less for, it, it, it really is to gather input, not just to listen. So, but, um, but it's a great point. So I don't know how other committee members are, are thinking about this, if, if anybody's really thinking of attending. If, if folks are, um, leaning more towards, I'll read the report and, and watch the video recordings once they're online, then, then we don't even need to have the discussion. But I think if, if any of us are planning to attend some of them, I think then, then we should have that question about whether we're attending mostly to hear what other people are saying or to actually also actively participate. So, um, with that, I'll, um, uh, look to you, Jen.
No problem. So the, the educational plan obviously is a critical piece of this project. And, um, if I'm, if I'm correct, I, I watched the last school building committee meeting. Am I correct, Mike, that, that David Stephen and he's putting together, like, that it's going to be like developed and finalized like in the next month or two? Is that right? Like by February-ish? And are these two sessions, these two workshops, are those the two, like the only two, like in per, not in person, but like live sessions where we'll be able to collect feedback from the community? Or is it, is it, are, are those two the, like the only two that we know of?
So I'll, I'll jump in first and correct me if, if I'm missing something, Ben or Mike. The, this is to, this is the input to develop the, the initial ed plan. The, um, we as a school committee, a body, will be getting a presentation of the, of sort of that input and that, that plan at one meeting. And I, I don't have the date in front of me, but we'll get to it when we get to agenda planning. And then at a following meeting is when we'll take a vote on that. So the community will at that point have two opportunities for public, for just public comment without having to participate in, in those input workshops, which is a huge ask, right? Three hours of your time to sit through that. So I think, um, when we get to that point where we're hearing that presentation, I think, um, when we get to that point where we're hearing that presentation, I think we could probably help that by making sure that folks know that we are specifically wanting to hear public comment about that. Um, we can even consider having that, um, partly as, as a hearing or a forum if we, if we choose to. Because we've had so many that, those other opportunities, I think it might be might be worth thinking about that before we, as, at a future meeting, as opposed to trying to answer that right now. But I do think that at the two meetings, one where we'll hear the report and the presentation, and one when we'll be voting will be um, both times and prime opportunities for community members to provide public comment, um, on, on the ed plan at that point.
Okay. So that, that's great. That's great that, that there will be further, um, opportunities for the public to give input, but I feel like it's important to get that input before like, so that the, before the plan is developed or as is being developed. Otherwise, it's like we get, we, we see the plan in one meeting and then we vote on it the next one. That doesn't really leave a lot of space for improvements or changes or taking in, taking in the public's input. Um, I, so I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking is, I, I would love to see opportunities for people to give input without having to attend one of these two sessions. So can, can, can people send an email? Can they leave a voicemail with ideas? Can we have a Google form? Like, can we offer, like, in a targeted way, opportunities for people to give input? And this is an important thing, like it's the, the future or the vision of elementary education in Amherst. Can we find different and more and different and varied ways for people to give their input? Um, and as I said, I watched the school building committee meeting and is that like a, I know that Kathy Shane and Phoebe Merriam had sort of volunteered to be like maybe that the outreach subcommittee or the, I don't remember what they called it, the working group, like is that, would that be under their purview? Should I just like contact them and see if that's something they can, they can put together? I, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think they would really value your partnership with that. Uh, by you, I mean both Jennifer as well as the committees. So, um, you know, if Ben agrees as being my fellow committee member, I think, I think that would, uh, they would welcome more participation and, and more support in exactly what you're describing. So, um, you know, I would fully endorse that. I think it's great and thank you.
I want to raise though, an important question, cause specifically with the ed plan, that's a responsibility of the school committee and not the building committee. Um, so it is a question, I mean, it's writ large, it's the building committee's responsibility as part of that, but in terms of um, authorizing and approving that, that's the school committee. So if the school committee feels that we need more input than than these workshops, and I, I, I don't know, I'm seeing some nodding heads, but in my mind, it seems like that would be our responsibility as a school committee, not the building committee's responsibility to ensure that the school committee has what its need, what it needs. But I, maybe I'm thinking this um, as well as other folks. Mike?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's right. Uh, what I liked about Jennifer's suggestion is it's making the connections because it the ed plan kind of falls in both categories, right? So the school committee has to approve it, but it's actually part of a document that the building committee then publishes and provides to the MSBA. So like, while the building committee is not technically voting on the ed plan, it's a school committee, it's part of a document that in, in totality, the school building committee votes on. So that's what, uh, what I liked about Jennifer's proposal, um, and whether it's Jennifer or someone else who does it, but it just, it connects the two bodies in a document that yes, the school committee is the approver, but it actually directs a lot of the work. And, and I know, you know, from Phoebe and from, uh, from some of the folks that were mentioned, that they're deeply invested in, in gathering feedback and input. And this one, having some school committee participation is great. Um, Ben's a fabulous school committee member, fabulous uh, building committee member, but I also think, you know, you've taken on, you know, an additional responsibility from what I recall a week ago. Uh, so, uh, I think if Ben was okay having some more support with that, um, you know, I, I, I think personally, I, I, I really endorse that idea.
Jennifer.
Um, so I, it, you know, assuming it's okay with everyone, I, I'd be happy to, to contact Phoebe, Merriam and Kathy Shane and, and work with them as a, you know, as a school committee member on, on trying to get some of that going. Um, a- along those same lines, um, do, huh? What opportunities are we giving to educators for them to give their input? I mean, other than these, these two forums, are we doing any sort of targeted? Outreach to educators, to, to, to our teachers, to like especially our K through five teachers to get their input and on, on this visioning?
Mike?
Yeah. So there was a specific email and, um, that went out to educators as well. I know we've gotten a lot of emails from educators who want to go on. I think the other thing to note is a lot of the details and specifics play out in an iterative manner. This was went over on our MSBA call as well. So like, you know, one of the people who reached out is a special educator and was thinking about specific structures for specialization programs. And while that will certainly be somewhat reflected in the ed plan, that work really kicks off once you start getting into where the boxes go and what kind of boxes you have in an architectural plan. So, you know, I think it's, it, it is important and I certainly welcome it, but I don't, also don't want people to feel like if I don't, if I can't make these meetings, there's no way for me to describe what the building, and it wasn't sort of building blocks, but like what the building plas, box program needs. That happens a little more deeper into feasibility. So, so absolutely, I want educators involved, but I also, I don't want to set up a dynamic, particularly at this moment in time where educators are taking on so much responsibility, uh, that, you know, the way the process went, you know, I understand it now and went last time is when we're getting into, okay, this is where these programs will go. There are specific meetings with specific educators when we're thinking about, for instance, what art rooms need. You know, some of that will be in the ed plan, but a lot of that's really driven by that kind of specific conversation with art educators and the architects over time uh, that, that plays out in an iterative fashion. So yes, we want educators involved and no, this isn't the only opportunity. And if they can't make it, uh, we certainly want their input and it, it gets a little more specific in the input. Once we start having boxes on pieces of paper. Does that, does that sort of make sense? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's.
But, but I'm glad you raised a point, cause I didn't say it earlier and I think it's a critical one.
Any other questions? Um, going back to the, to the outreach for, um, public input on the ed plan, I, I had been, um, back in December, been talking, connecting with Kathy specifically on this as well. Um, so I would be happy to join that, um, and, and want to continue in that and sort of that role. Um, uh, and I think, yeah, that'd be good. Um, if there's no more questions, Collins adds. We're seeing them. Um, we will move on to our next item, which is, uh, safety and health updates.
Oh, I thought we were shifting that one so that we could go to budget earlier, but.
Oh, okay. I was, I had, um,
I'm sorry, I must have missed.
After safety.
And mixed that up. I'm sorry. No, 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 we can do so, his safety and, and health. I think you're going to hear very similar things that you might've heard a week ago. So, uh, Doug, I'm conscious of your time, but I think, you know, we'll see how long this takes, but, um, I'll go into, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that, um, Allison. So, safety and health updates, uh, just going back, cause this committee hasn't met since December. So before the break, all educators and all students in the Amherst Public Schools received two, um, rapid tests, thanks to a partnership with the town of Amherst, uh, thanks to the state, all the educators received rapid tests before uh, students and they came back from the December break and, you know, it worked, right? We had an, uh, not a huge number, but we had a number of asymptomatic staff members who, uh, came in, get the tests and tested positive for COVID, uh, despite the fact, I mean, we had a couple of them who got in touch with me and said, I took both of them, cause I figured it must be wrong, right? And I'm not trying to say that COVID is not very real or that no one has symptoms, but the reality is for vaccinated boosted people, there's a, a non-zero number of people who have asymptomatic infections. And so we're glad we were able to do that. Thank you for our staff for coming in on a Sunday, a rainy Sunday, uh, and getting tests and, and doing, you know, uh, the right thing by, you know, making sure they got tested before they returned. So, uh, that is, uh, one part of our update. We've had increases in pool testing. Unfortunately, this week we've had, uh, some challenges with the vendor and staffing. So our, uh, it's a mismatch of, uh, more, more folks involved in pool testing and fewer testers. The line's been a little longer. We've had to reshuffle schedules a bit. Uh, but hopefully the staffing, they've reassured us that staffing will, should level off in the next couple of days, uh, but we, it has been a challenge. Also consistent with statewide, the, it's not about them, but you know, there's so much more testing going on right now. So we were getting our pool testing results within twenty four hours up until this week, uh, up until last week, and now it's taking more like forty eight hours for those adults to come in. So just you know, transparent with the community that we are working with our vendor, but our vendor is up against the same thing everybody else is, as it relates to testing, uh, you know, with so many, you know, going to the same testing site in Cambridge, uh, center in Cambridge is there's only so much they can process at a day in terms of their capacity at the moment, but I'm really glad that our numbers are going up. Uh, we did start a program, uh, last week for offering one test to anyone who's deemed a close contact, regardless of vaccination status. Interestingly, today the state updated their guidance, uh, which recommended a rapid test for anyone who's a close contact, regardless of vaccination status. Didn't require it, but recommended it. So, uh, we were, uh, you know, it's nice when you do something that's not in the recommended guidance of the state and then, you know, it kind of plays out that way. So, uh, you know, we, we are doing that. We have seen an uptick of cases at the elementary level. Um, it has not been nearly as great as, um, the state averages, um, but it is an uptick and I want to, you know, be clear about that. But, um, you know, every Thursday, the state puts out a report, district by district of positive cases and, um, looking at our neighboring districts on a per capita basis. Doing pretty well, um, uh, given the, the kind of high level of, of spread that's in the, in the state right now. On that topic, uh, we had a vaccine clinic last Wednesday. We did have a number of elementary school children receive their first shots. They're, they'll receive their second shots, uh, same location at the high school, um, two and a half weeks from now, the twenty sixth. Uh, and there'll be some boosters for, for some of their parents perhaps, and some of our older students who are now eligible, uh, for booster shots. Um, then we will, um, that second one will be our fifteenth clinic, uh, since we got going, uh, in the spring, uh, across all the districts. We're up to, uh, Amherst and Pelham get reported together in the state data on vaccinations, cause we share a zip code and it's done by, by a zip code. And we're up to, for five to eleven year olds, we're at seventy percent received, sixty nine or seventy percent have received a first shot and sixty percent are fully vaccinated. So, um, you know, the state average is, I think, in the neighborhood of half of that. Um, so, you know, we're doing relatively well and right? That still means there's thirty percent of our elementary students who have not received a vaccine or five to eleven year olds in our towns, I should say. Uh, which there's no reason, I think it's not a representative sample. So, uh, you know, we're continuing to do some, do work on that. I'm, I'm working on a little video just to share some information about masking, which I'll speak about in a second and vaccination, um, to take these long lengthy emails that I send sometimes are known to send to families and try to condense it into, I'm trying to get it to three minute. I hear that no one watches a video if it's three minute, more longer than three minutes. So I'm trying to narrow it down to three minutes. Uh, just again, with some of the benefits, not in a, you know, way that you have to, cause we're not in that place, but just to talk about some of the benefits of vaccination, you know, I saw some data that was indicating, you know, five to eleven year olds who got their vaccine to the last couple of months, the hospitalization rate was at like three per million or something like that. It was, it was infinitesimally small. Uh, compared to unvaccinated kids at this age level. So, um, you know, we're, we're trying to, kind of fine tune that and get that out by the end of the week. Um, ventilation, even on days like today where it's cold, our windows are open during, uh, meal times, uh, you know, at the elementary level, we've had the airplane rules for quite some time now during our meal times. We've, we've kind of, in terms of distancing, gotten back to where we were. Uh, you know, more last year, uh, or in the early fall with just, you know, really, really doubling down on that, uh, that part. I think I mentioned last week that we've moved our adult meetings of any kind of reasonable size to virtual. Uh, you know, we have a teacher workday a week from Friday. That's going to be where we're permitting teachers to do their work virtually. Uh, educators do their work virtually that day, if they don't need to be in buildings, because we, again, we want to provide as much flexibility as we can when it doesn't involve, you know, directly working with students. Finally, uh, change in recommendations. So we have not had, uh, starting yesterday, cloth masks were no longer permitted. Cloth masks, you know, you read different estimates, but a thirty to fifty percent filtration. Uh, that's not good enough with Omicron. So we're, we're pretty much relying on, uh, surgical masks, which are, you know, generally thought of between sixty and seventy percent filtration. Uh, surgical mask plus cloth mask, which is, you know, between eighty and ninety percent filtration. Uh, and then, uh, KN ninety fives, which are the ones we purchased, uh, that are free, free and available for all students are, have been rated by third parties at ninety seven percent filtration. So, uh, you know, some of that I want to do in the video, cause I think numerically, it sort of makes a difference when you hear the numbers instead of like good, better, best, uh, hearing the numbers might, might help people make that decision. Uh, we've had, uh, talking to three elementary school principals last two days, we have had no, no problems with students. Um, you know, some students brought in cloth masks, they put the surgical under it, or they replaced it, or they took a KN ninety five or KF ninety four. We get a couple of those for the younger kids. Um, we, we really haven't struggled, you know, so I want to thank our community for, I know is yet another restriction that we're putting on, uh, on elementary kids and their parents. And they have been wonderful and engaging in, uh, being open to the change. Uh, so I want to really thank, you know, I, I say this all the time. I really am appreciative of the community I'm working in. Uh, masking in and of itself is a controversial place in many, you know, many neighboring towns and, uh, you know, here we are raising our masking game and people have rolled with it. Uh, and so we're really happy and we were able to support, again, the purchase, um, so that cost of family, um, income is not a predictor of filtration of masks. Uh, so we do have a high quality younger kid. They're about fifteen percent smaller than the older kid ones, um, KF, KN ninety fives that are available. And we do see students using them on a regular basis in our schools. Um, so that I think eh, oh, and I should say that, you know, it's going to ebb and flow, right? So, you know, I saw some uh, positive data about wastewater. Granted, it was in Boston, but you know, it's been exponentially growing. It plateaued and actually is starting to come down. So, you know, we'll, we'll knock on wood that maybe a month from now, we're in a different context and a different situation. And, uh, you know, I keep, continue to say, you know, these restrictions are not, they're not, not meant forever. Uh, and so I think now is not the time to be pushing, relaxing, uh, those measures, but hopefully in February, March, April, whenever that time is, we can have conversations about how to, how to perhaps open things up a little bit uh, from where they are now. It just, now is a particularly tough time in Massachusetts. And that is the summary of, uh, safety updates and happy to take any questions that the committee members have.
Questions? Peter?
Yeah, um, so thank you again for coordinating with the town of Amherst and thank you for the town of Amherst for the, the rapid testing, particularly getting it, uh, distributed, um, before the, before the break. Um, obviously it had benefit and just unbelievable, the, 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 the continued mistakes and operational rollout that Desi has had supporting districts throughout the state. Um, so a lot of districts cost state run a very difficult place over break because of, uh, the state's failures to organize. So just, just thank you to our, our staff for, for working to do that and, and working with the town of Amherst. Um, I guess my question is about staffing, um, both staffing levels and staff morale. Um, you know, so where, where is your concernometer right now in terms of staffing levels for like, you know, just having enough staff to, to drive the buses and, and be at work so that we don't get into a difficult situation of having to maybe um, to, to not have school. Um, and then to morale, you know, like, I, I, I keep thinking of these like additional layers that we're putting on and these additional pressures and, um, and how staff are just rolling with it and you know, windows cracked today with negative wind chills and, 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 and it's, you know, and our, and our cases just are just so exceptional. Um, and I just, I just, you know, teachers are, are pretty amazing, but they're not superhuman. And so I just, um, I'm assuming that this is pretty high on your mental tracking list, but you know, what, like, what's your sense of, of, of what the morale of staff is, you know? Cause we're right now, we're, this is like the middle of winter, right? Where there's not a break coming soon, you know, we're, we're hunkering down for it and, um, you know, just talk a little bit about, you know, what, how, how you see that going.
Yeah, it is what we think about, you know, a- and I think that, to be really candid, the challenge is how to do the other parts of the job. You know, um, cause this is so much our focus. So, uh, it was, it relates to staffing, we've been okay. I'm not saying it's easy, but we've been okay. And, you know, what we've seen is, you know, we had, um, the staff who tested positive either over the break or right before the break ended. Uh, many of those staff are now back, um, and, and healthy and feeling good and in buildings. Uh, you know, and our numbers, our new numbers of cases among staff are not as high as they were ten days ago. Um, so I think, you know, it, it's, it's been, it's been not easy and every day is a shuffle, but we've been okay. Our HR team's been fabulous, sort of expanding the list of subs and hiring more permanent subs and, uh, and doing that. So, you know, uh, I'm going to knock on wood again, because that could shift at a moment's notice, but you know, so far we've been okay. I think the, the piece on morale is huge. I think that's true for educators across the country. You know, we do have a community of care group, I think I've described at these meetings who think about ways that they can be connecting with, with staff members, um, at a, at a broad level, but also at a specific level. Folks who have had things happen in their lives, whether COVID related or not, uh, to be able to support them. And, uh, you know, And, you know, I think it is a real challenge, you know, things like, you know, making sure that everyone can work virtually on the 21st. I know that sounds maybe like a small thing for people who are watching this, but, you know, it means that, you know, people, that's mostly a day where staff members are working on report cards and transitioning between. At the elementary level, it's primarily a day where staff members are working on report cards or progress reports. And, you know, the little things like that, like people don't have to come in. If they want to work from home, they, they can choose to work from home. Those little things aren't always little things for people. And we're trying to find every opportunity we can to lighten the load on things that aren't directly involved in the educating of students. So, you know, that was like, you know, one, we just wanted to, you know, check in with everyone, make sure our, our administrative team was fine with it. But we're constantly looking for ways to remove non-educational obstacles to people's day and make sure they feel supported. But the morale piece is really hard. I think the morale piece is hard outside of school too, for families and for students as well, who at the elementary level, you had this broad excitement when the vaccine was approved among many that, oh, okay, things can maybe get back to normal, right? Because if you think of like October, November, vaccine gets approved, pre-Omicron. And so I think there's a lot of, a lot of challenges that relates to well-being for all staff members. I mean, HR team sends out many reminders to Maya, our health insurance company, about different wellness initiatives that are out there for folks to engage in. But really, we've tried to take a step back on some of the non-core work of our district. Make sure educators aren't getting bogged down on kind of additional things that in a typical year would be expected because the, the work that they're doing is, is, is so challenging. And so, you know, I think the other piece I'd mentioned is we've worked with the Bright program. I think I've mentioned that multiple times before in multiple contexts. They're doing a tremendous job. They've been to a number of school staff meetings on, on self-care, which is, you know, I know buzzwordy, but they, they make it not buzzwordy, you know? They really do a tremendous amount on how to support each other collegially. And that's been incredibly well received by our staff members, the work with those folks. It doesn't always have to be, you know, principals, system principals or people like Fay doing it. Sometimes there are experts in our area, in, in this area who, you know, we've given space instead of working on, you know, the next academic thing, but really opportunities for staff members to engage in work that's about themselves and their well-being. And we've gotten really positive feedback on that. But if there's a silver bullet out there, someone can send it to me. I don't think it is out there, but I think, you know, what we've tried to do is accumulation of, you know, acknowledgements, positive regard, removing kind of barriers that typically exist. And we're sort of getting rid of those so that people, people can work on the incredibly important work of, of coming to work every day and challenging environment and doing that. I think, you know, one of the things that was interesting is feedback is, you know, you mentioned, and I don't want to go down a road of, of lasting Desi because I don't think there's, there's a good point in it. But with the mask thing, which certainly was in the news, right? You know, a number of staff, they said, we're not going to use those, right? We're going to use the things we've been doing since we came back and we, we have existing supply and it's all embedded. And, you know, we said, of course. So, I mean, I think there are some things, you know, someone mentioned it to me last week. They said, because maybe we went through some pretty hard struggles in 2020 and 2021, we've come out the other side with safety protocols and expectations for ourselves and for our students and for, you know, collectively, that we've been able to rely on even in these tough moments where for, for, you know, the person said for some districts, they had colleagues who work and they're developing, oh, KN95s, what are those? How would we get those for staff? We have protocols for that. I mean, everyone knows those protocols. So I do think there's some, there's some positive story here that sometimes out of struggle, you end up agreeing on some things that are durable, that last even when things get hard again. And, and I, you know, I, I take real, I hadn't really thought about it that way. So I do appreciate a staff member sharing that because I think it did, you know, obviously that year was a really hard year and, and had a lot of contention, but I do believe we came out with stronger plans around health and safety that, that I don't, they don't remove all anxiety, but at least we're not building new things right now because we had those structures in place. Sorry, long-winded answer, but critical question.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, going to move on. So this is where we're, we're doing the, the flip. So we're going to pull up item G, fiscal year 23 budget and tackle that one next. So there's, I think, two pieces to this because Doug, you've joined us. So I don't know if you had an update for us that you wanted to share. But part of this, part of this agenda item is also talking about, back in, I want to say November meeting, we had talked about wanting to find, to offer other ways other than attending the forums that we, the forum that we held in the fall to be able to provide input into, into our budget planning process for the community. You know, there's, there's, similar to the conversation we just had about the ed plan is really, you know, participating in the budget forum shouldn't be the only opportunity that people have to be heard on this. Sort of feedback from that committee on this, but this is, like I said, it doesn't have to be identical to. It was one, one topic, but I, Doug, you've been waiting here for a while. So want to give the floor to you if you had updates that you wanted to share with us at this point.
Not a tremendous amount at this moment. You know, I think that we'll be, you know, actually the superintendent and I tomorrow will be thinking about scheduling conversations or ongoing conversations with, with Ministry of Staff and, and directors and that type around, you know, sort of budget. And, and, you know, getting that, you know, sort of feedback into the planning that we're doing at this point. So we're, we're right in the process of, of putting things together and trying to compile the budget in a coherent way and, and have clear, clearly identified sort of, you know, good and bad as far as, you know, the inflationary pressures and/or cost savings that we have coming up and, and know about. You know, governor's budget will come out on the 19th, I think I've saw. So that's actually good news that it's coming out a little earlier. That'll start to shape some of the pieces of the puzzle that we don't know just yet relative to chapter 70. And, and soon following that budget, we'll also, you know, give some, some indication about some of our charter and choice and, and other aspects of our budget that sort of, you know, we use that governor's budget as a, as a first frame of, of where things are going to go for the coming fiscal year. And while they will change over the process with the, at the state level, they don't change wildly generally from that point. So that gives us a pretty decent place to start most of the time. And so that stuff's coming up. And I'll, I'll make a very brief comment about my read through this, this particular document. I like the way that it's framed the questions in, in allowing somebody that may not be as intimately familiar with all the nuance of our budget to be able to provide some constructive, you know, input to, to topics. Now, that doesn't preclude anybody from, you know, writing to you directly as, as they always have and advocating for program X, Y, or Z, that kind of thing. But I think that there are, there, the way this has been framed is, is one that is, is constructive and, and helpful as far as, you know, how I would approach sort of, you know, the building of the base budget and the level services, but also as we begin to have those conversations and, and think about things that we're looking to add or, or change about our, our budget. You know, this gives us that kind of proper feedback to get, you know, sort of sense of community, you know, input. And so I'm appreciative that you, you've put this together.
And remind me, so I, I think in terms of the, the timeline, the timeline for the Amherst School Committee budget is slightly, is a little different than other, other districts that we work with. And so what, just, just so that, well, us as a school committee, but more importantly, the community has an understanding of sort of what, what our timing is, when we'll see sort of that first, first draft of the budget, when, when will we have it finalized? Will that, will that be at our February meeting? Will it be later than that?
So I have all the, I gotta look at the dates again of when you're meeting. Yes, you're meeting again on the 8th of February. We're likely going to have that, you know, sort of, you know, the first full draft of the budget. At that point, it will have, you know, some consideration based on, on the, the input from the, from the town as far as what resources are available to us. We'll have worked through some of the, you know, things we need to do in order to sort of meet that target. As far as timeline, I believe that, that, you know, strictly speaking, you have to have an approved budget to the town manager by April 1st, I believe. And then he has to get it to the council by May 1st so that they can have their deliberation and their vote in. Ultimately, they'll do their vote in, in June. So it basically adds a month to the cycle relative to the regional schools and, and/or the, the helm school. I think you guys serve on that one, but with those being tied to town meetings that start earlier then we have a little more time relative to Amherst and, and its budget process.
Before I open up to questions from the committee, one other thing that the committee, we talked about in the fall of, of something that we really wanted to see as we move into sort of first look at the budget was understanding first what a budget would look like, what would we need? You know, and looking at that, that budget for what would we need just to continue the same services that we have before we, we look at what do we need to do to meet whatever guidance we, we have in the town? So really being able to see sort of those two, two sort of pictures, if you will. One, this is how much, this is how much budget we believe we need to continue to provide the, the services and, and programs that we have, that we are today so that we understand how much larger or smaller or same, you know, what that difference looks like. I think particularly when we, we start talking with the town, you know, to understand, demonstrate what we need to cut before we, before we show the budget that meets the demands from the, from the town or the guidance from the town, showing what we, we believe we need so that we can compare those two, two buckets, if you will.
Right. You know, and I think that, you know, I have a preliminary version of that right now. I think that, you know, you know, given that we'll, we'll be a little more refined when we get to the 8th because, because we'll have some of the things like the governor's budget that helps really shape a few things. We'll have some other information along those lines, but, but, you know, I definitely, you know, I have a sense of, of where we are in, on that right at the moment and I'm sure that with the superintendent and, and, you know, it is, you know, the, the, I will say this, the resources that are currently sort of been, you know, projected for us from the town of Amherst are probably not quite going to meet our needs. But that's the nature of the inflationary, you know, cycle that we have. And this happens, you know, I mean, that happens to the town budget as well is that their, their overall, you know, increases are oftentimes greater than the, the raw dollars that they're starting with. And so there are a number of factors that are going to play out in the next few weeks, you know, that will, that will, you know, influence where we sit relative to that, but also, will also, you know, help us and, and, and give us a little clearer picture of that. But we've got a starting sense of that now, but we'll definitely have that in place, you know, for you when we, when you guys meet on the 8th.
Questions first for Doug on the budget timeline and, and process? And, and if there's, if there's no questions, then we can move into this, this input form. Feedback on revisions, ads to that. Peter?
Sorry, using the analog, the old school analog hand to raise. So Doug, what, what, about what date do you think we'll, we'll get the like? So it used to come as a book and then it came as an iPad, but like the massive line by line item that, you know, you can spend a year and a day poring over. What is, what is the drop date ETA for that?
Well, you meet on the 8th, so it needs to go in the packet before the 8th, which would be probably the Friday before that. You know, if, if obviously, if you would like it sooner, you know, that, I can, you know, make it a target to get to that, but, but probably no less than that Friday before, which is probably the fourth or so, I'd say. So likely the fourth, if I can get it to you sooner or if, you know, by direction from you guys, if you need it the first or something like that, then we'll do what we need to do to put that in. You know, I'm always going to ask for more time because I, there's more things we can refine and make, you know, better. But, you know, realistically, it's probably the fourth.
Mike?
I'll do my annual reminder that, that it's not about Doug. I said the same thing with Sean was in the role, that this is where it gets really challenging to have three districts, right? I know for most people, it's like a sort of artifact of bureaucratic bureaucracy, I'll just put it that way. It's not for Doug and it's not for you all. We have two districts to manage as it relates to budgets that are loosely aligned and technically not aligned at all in terms of the work. And then there's also another district that Doug and I work for. So I'm not saying that wasn't the right question. It absolutely was. Peter, like, there's no critique of the question. It's just, you know, sometimes people are like, well, you know, you know, in these solitary, single districts, not regional, that would be great. It's not Doug or my reality right now. You know, these things fly a little bit easier, but all three districts are on similar. It is helpful that, you know, with the, you know, now the Amherst one can be a little bit later than the regional one by a couple of weeks. And that spaces things out a little bit. But the, you know, I just want to appreciate Doug and, and his staff at the building, at the business office because it's, it can be very challenging and week to week presenting different budgets to different school committees and getting different pieces of feedback and then making those adjustments. It's a, it's a whirlwind couple of months. So just want to say that out loud and, and thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, thank you. There's, we can move on if folks want to, to the input form. And this, as I mentioned, this form was, is an adaptation of one that the Budget Subcommittee Chair and I frankly had worked together on, to pull together for that district. And so this is an adaptation of that. In pulling that one together, we sourced from models from districts that we found frankly around the country, including one in Worcester and, and other towns, just looking at sort of what other districts have, have used. Oh, Northampton was another one that we looked at to inform. And so this is sort of like pulling in and sort of an amalgamation of, of things that we have seen other districts use to get sort of community sentiment and input on it and then adapted or revised specific to our, our district. And I think the intent of this would be that we would distribute it to, to families in, in the district as well as make, make it available on, on the website for other folks that maybe don't have students in the district that would like to provide any input on it. Because obviously the school's budget impacts everybody, not just, not just families with, individuals with students in the district. Jennifer? Need to unmute.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now? My microphone changed for whatever reason. Is this when we're giving input on the form? Okay. So the, the table and like the list and question three, the, the list of items, like I'm just, I'm just, I'm hoping you can share also. I'm like, how was this list arrived at? And like, what do these things represent? Like, are these all the things that we would consider cutting or what, what, like, how, how, why, why are these things on the list? And like, what, what does this list represent?
Good question. And I think that's, that's sort of where I'm hoping to get input from, from the committee on really is. The idea here is to, to, this list is pulling, frankly, to start the question design and, and sort of initial list of options was pulled from another district. I can't remember which one. And then adapt. And then adapted specifically to us, but it was a way of pulling the question of, rather than saying, where should we look for cuts? What should we preserve and, and specific? Pull it up to a level that more people, where we're really thinking about priorities in general, um, and, and sort of a philosophy and an approach as opposed to, you know, this particular piece of furniture or this particular class, um, or, uh, you know, rather than it's, it's, because in, in, in they interact in so many ways. So really the, the idea is to sort of position that so that, to invite others to think it through some of these things about, gosh, which one of these is really essential because obviously we want all of these. Well, maybe not obviously, but, um, but I, I, you know, I think, you know, in a perfect world, we want all of these. And the idea is to sort of start to tease apart and as, as Doug pointed out, to understand priorities, but on this sort of higher level as opposed to, a specific teacher or staff position, um, or furniture, right? I, I don't presume to believe that that's as, as comprehensive as it could be or that these all should be here, right? So I think that's where I'm hoping, um, sort of the collective genius of this group can, um, pull some of that together and refine it. Peter?
Yeah, so it's funny, I'm of like two minds of this. Like, on, on the one hand, I think that when we're, when we are gathering community input, on anything, but it's particularly in something as complex as the budget, that the more things that we can do, even if some of those things are imperfect and even if some of those things only meet, you know, engage a, a handful of people, the better because it's like pieces of a puzzle and then they form a, blanking on a word, but they form a collection of input, um, that we, that we can consider and, and take into account. And, um, everything has its own little style. So I think, I think it's good to ask open ended questions like this. And, and to, and to put it at the high level. You know, that being said, I'm trying to put myself in the position of like, okay, if I were to fill this out, how would I fill this out? And so, you know, I'm going through the table of, um, you know, what's, uh, what's essential, what's important, what's good? I, I'm not finding I can do anything other than just circle everything, you know? And, um, and, and similar with the, with the top three question, I don't know how I, I would answer that as well. So on the other hand, if you don't force a decision, then you don't get any declarative input. And yet, I, you know, I, I, I don't, I, I don't know. So I, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm curious as to what kind of response we would get from this, um, and into how actionable it would be. But, but I think it's better than not trying to do another thing, right? I mean, we've, we've already done the, the budget forms. We've already talked about budget publicly for, for many months. You know, we, we, we try and tell people to email us as much as possible. You know, we're going to continue to do as much as we can to ask people to contact us. At the end of the day though, I, 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 I think, you know, we're, we're going to have the vast majority of the public not having contacted us directly, right? Of, of the residents that live in town and pay taxes, support the schools. Um, and so we're going to have to just kind of take this all, information all collectively. And, and I don't, I don't know if it's a solvable problem. How do you get the, the perfect survey that's going to elicit exactly, you know, what you need that, that can, is statistically significant and is, you know, action irrelevant? But, but I, but we haven't done it before. And so I, I, I think we, we should do it. And I, I don't have a ton of input on, on these other than maybe adding like a, a, a free form text, like that if you get to, you know, the, the 10th box, you know, is there an other topic here that we missed that you would like to see as a top priority? Or that you would have circles as the top three or four and then allowing people to input that? That would be the only kind of, kind of thing there.
Yeah, you bring up some really good points because I think, you know, the, the simplest form is just, so the questions five and six are those questions, um, the open ended. What should we prioritize? What should, what could be reduced? And, and, you know, this, that would be the simplest form. And yet it may not help us if we're in the situation that we do have to make cuts. Hopefully not, but, um, but, uh, you know, at, at, at the, at the point where we're, we as a district and a school committee will be having to make some hard choices. I, I think, you know, as to your point, you know, starting somewhere, because I think, you know, wherever, whenever we're, whenever a, a cut is proposed, we hear from the community members who value that the most. But we don't hear sort of the, from the community members, from the alternate things that we didn't consider or that we aren't cutting. So this is a, a, a way, it's a little bit squeaky wheel, but this is a way to, you know, to pilot, if you will, to figure out, to see if we can get some insight or some, some sort of, measurement from the people who are paying attention to the budget to hear sort of, okay, where, where are the priorities, right? So, um, you know, if we have to be looking for cuts. Or if we are in the enviable position that we have some sort of surplus, where should we be looking to, to, um, add to that and prioritize that? Erv?
Yeah, I, I, I think I really wanted, uh, when I saw this, I said, I really need a little bit more time to, uh, go through this and think about it. Because there are a number of questions that were there. I did, one question was, well, is this really going to be a survey? And a survey and is, is, if it's going to be a survey, is this format, uh, the best way to present it? So I mean, there are questions on, I, I just got to go through it again. The other thing is, uh, who is this going to be distributed to and how widely is it going to be distributed? Because that's another thing. And then if it's going to be distributed widely or, uh, or whatever, how are we then going to get it all that back and then collate this in terms of the information? Generally speaking, when you do this kind of, it's, you know, it's a, it's a survey and it goes out to people. Again, I don't know who that audience might be. But, uh, people who respond are those people who respond. So it's representative of, of only those people who respond and no one else. So then we'd have to determine, well, how relevant is that to us? As the information that we get back. So I, again, it, uh, this, it's always valuable to be able to do this. Any kinds of, uh, means in which we can communicate with the public and get their feedback is always welcome. And I would like to make sure that whenever we distribute this, that it is something that is going to be utilized by the broadest possible population in Amherst. And we need to think about how we're going to make sure and ensure that it gets to the broadest possible population.
I see a couple of other hands. Mike, were you, did you have a specific response to Erv's comments or can we go with Jennifer?
I can wait.
Okay, Jennifer?
Thank you.
So yeah, to Erv's point, I, I think that, I don't think that we, I don't think that we expect this survey to be representative of our, of all the families in our district or of all our, of our communities or all, you know, all, all community members. And so I think that, you know, I would see something like this as being, uh, as collecting qualitative data and information, not quantitative. So I think of this as like a digital focus group as opposed to a survey that's going to have a sample size that it's going to, a sufficient enough sample size that it will be, that we'll be able to use it in a quantitative way. And, and so, you know, if, if maybe, like if we're lucky, maybe like a hundred people will take it, maybe not even that many. And so what would we do with, what would we do with the, I, I, what would we do with those, with the quantitative results of a survey to, you know, a hundred or fewer people? I was thinking specifically about the table, which I feel like, you know, if, if the few number of people who fill out the survey, give us this, give us these, this information in this table, what would we do with it? What would we do with it since we know it doesn't represent, it's not representative of the community? So I would like to think of, I think we should think of this survey more as qualitative with mostly open ended questions, less so checkboxes and ranking things, because I don't think we, I don't think that data will be actionable. But I think mostly open ended questions will give people a chance to maybe have some creative ideas or to, you know, you know, to tell us what, to tell us what's important to them. Like in a qualitative way, not in a, not, not in a way that's going to, that we think is going to be representative of the community. And my second question is, will we allow submissions to be anonymous? I, I would hope so, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
I think, um, uh, what the intent would be to use a Google form so that to answer also Erv's question about collating. So that just sort of gets assembled immediately. That allows anonymity, but we would want to limit it to one person, response per person. So people would have to, um, we, we did this, um, in a, in a recent, I think it was through, I can't remember what survey that we've done, we used a Google form and that, those are truly anonymous, even though the respondent has to give their email address. That's the way Google checks to make sure that there's a single response. Yeah, I go back and forth on the, on the, I, I totally, it, it's not going to be representative. I think when we included this, um, question three was really to invite people to think through, because it's easy to say, this is really important to me and I want it. And if it's just open ended, it's going to be what's on top of mind versus thinking about, well, oh gosh, well, if, if I, if that's what I want, but that means that I'm going to have larger class sizes. Or we, you know, we can't, we're, we're going to be limited in, you know, how much, you know, how much of these other supports that we can have because of that. I think that it's sort of like trying to think of the way to, get that input, that sort of open input, but in a way that sort of recognizes that it, it's not, um, that there is a certain zero sum game, right? So in terms of prioritize, what, what should we preserve? And, and if preserving that one thing means reducing in some other area, if we, if it's just an open ended question, then people may not be thinking through what are those trade offs? So I would love to, if, if any of you have ideas on how to do that in a qualitative way to sort of help and, and, and understand sort of, okay, but if we had to do a trade up, where is your priority? Versus just open ended feedback, because we get that right now, frankly, I will say, like the, the emails that we get, the public comment that we get when we have the budget hearing, we get that open, oh, please don't take this away. This is super important for me. What we don't hear is how much. And Allison, I, thank you. We're extended to nine forty. Mike?
So just hearing the dialogue tonight, uh, I just wanted to offer that if, if the committee does want to either have a subcommittee or someone make edits, I don't think, and bring it back to the next meeting in February, I think that'd be fine in terms of timing, because, because we do have a little more time than we do at the regional level. Cause it's been really rich dialogue and I think, you know, I've learned a lot of, uh, different views. Budget is certainly an area where, uh, one of the primary responsibilities of the school committee. So I don't feel like it's overstepping or, you know, sometimes, you know, like this one's, it really is, you know, we do a lot of work on budget. I don't want to suggest we don't, but, um, you know, just from a process perspective, it might be good for, you know, a small group to take the feedback process it, come back with a revised draft that the committee can then, you know, potentially endorse the next meeting. And, you know, we can operationalize and get out pretty soon after. So just two cents, my two cents.
I like minds, um, like thinking, because I was going to suggest that too. I think, um, given the hour, um, I think the rest of our agenda is going to move more quickly. So I'm, I'm not, um, but I do think we need to move on. And that, hence my question, Doug, about the timeline. So I'm, 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 I think sort of they're coming back to this at our February meeting. Is there, um, is, is there anybody who would like to, work on this, um, uh, in between now and then? Or, um, I'm happy to, Jennifer?
I'll work on it with you, Allison.
I was hoping you'd say that. Excellent, okay. So, and, and if anybody has any other additional thoughts, um, after tonight, um, feel free to email them to me or to Jennifer, just one of us. Um, and she and I will, um, uh, work on that together. Uh, next up is charter school costs. Um, and this was, uh, came out of, again, earlier budget conversations about sort of the complexity of charter school accounting. And I think this was proposed by Peter, so I will look to you, um, to talk, talk through this.
Sure. So th- this will be relatively brief because I don't have tonight, the complete set of information I'd like to have gathered yet for, for full discussion and, and possible action. But, but I did want to start the conversation on it, um, given that we just talked about our budget and, and this could potentially have a large impact on, on that. So, so basically the, this, this is about the question, how are charter school costs presented by the town in our budget guidance? How are they paid for? And, and then a potential action to consider, uh, would be, do we want to ask the town to change how these costs are presented and, and how it's paid for? And so it's about charter school tuition, which would have a, it has a pretty significant impact on our budget. As I'm, I'm sure you all know, it's about 1.7 million in FY22, which is about 6% of our budget. And we can, that can keep going up. More kids go to charters. There's a 9% cap, um, on that, but, you know, so that, that could go up to about two and a half million. And there's a little reimbursement, um, but once you flatten out and there's not a big delta from year to year, it's, it's pretty small. So FY22, it's, it's about 174,000, the last, the last SE spreadsheet I looked at. So, you know, so about 90% of our costs are not reimbursed. So it has a pretty big impact on our budget. And, and the question here about, about how it's presented is, um, is, it's kind of a technical one. And this is why I, I want to, I still have some work to do, I, uh, to, uh, review some things with, with Doug. And I also wanted to talk to the, uh, town finance manager, Sean Manganu, who, uh, conveniently used to be the school finance director, so he knows about this. But basically one thing that happens is that, you know, because the, the charter school, uh, tuition is paid out of the school budget. If, if last year's charter costs, uh, were higher than the previous year, then, then the guidance, uh, for the schools can appear to be lower than, than, than the presented guidance. And then if, if the costs for, for last year were higher than the previous year, then the, then the, uh, guidance can, can appear to be the other direction. I'm not explaining this well, but basically if you've ever watched the four towns, not the four towns, the, um, four board, it used to be called the four boards meeting. Now it's called the financial indicators meeting in Amherst for the, the first meeting in October where they, town presents its initial guidance, which is two and a half. If I recall correctly, it hasn't changed. They always say like, okay, so two and a half for the library, two and a half for the departments and the schools. And it's never exactly the guidance, right? It's like 2.34 or 2.75. And then Sean explains that this is because of, of the delta in last year's charter costs and the, and the, and the cost before. And I, I believe this is one of the years where it, it looks during the slides and the presentation that the schools are getting more than the guidance, which, which is not the case. Even, even though technically because of the way the accounting works, um, it, it, it comes out to that. And I've always found this a, a difficult and frustrating part of how the budget is presented because it, it makes it look to the public like the schools are getting more than average when, when they're not. And then in years when, uh, it can sometimes make the schools look like we're getting less than average. So that, that's one question of it. The, the bigger piece is, is how these costs are, are paid for. So, so technically the charter school tuition bill is a town bill. It's a bill that the municipality of the town of Amherst gets. This is just for the elementary, by the way, not, not talking about region. And, um, and I, I had had some conversations with some other school districts, um, where they said, oh, well, our town pays that bill out of their general budget and then they, they give the guidance to the rest of the, of their departments, including the schools. So in other words, the town absorbs the cost, not the school budget. I was like, oh, that's interesting. How common is that? And so I, I've tried to do some digging and I haven't gotten a very high percentage of, um, school districts yet, but I've, I've heard back from 20. And of the 20 I've heard back from, 15 of those, the town pays the charter school costs out of the town budget. Town absorbs the cost. Uh, and in five of those, uh, including Amherst, um, the, the schools, uh, absorb the cost. The school budget absorbs the cost of the charter schools. So we're the exception to the rule, at least for the first 20 districts I've looked at. And, um, you know, and these are, are districts like, Hadley, Northampton, Greenfield, Belchertown, Cambridge. So our neighbors, um, some other. um uh Hadley, Northampton, Greenfield, Belchertown, Cambridge. So our neighbors, um some other comparable districts uh do this. So so you know, the the question is really, sh- should that be how they're paid? Um and uh in addition to how it's how it's presented. Um now, there is some detail and nuance to this, because even as I'm talking through this, you know, there's there's this arrears complication where uh the charter school uh costs that get paid in one fiscal year's budget is is for the costs that that completed the previous year. And so there's always this lag that's difficult to present. And I'm also, it's also possible I'm missing some other accounting detail here. Uh so this is why I want to go back to to Doug and why I want to go back to uh Mr. Manganu, uh just to make sure I have all the information correctly. Um and and then we can, you know, we can talk about it. Um it's 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 something that that could potentially have a large impact on our budget. Um but at the very least, it's something I think that could be improved in terms of communicating what our budget actually is in terms of the support from the town. So that's where I'm at right now. Um um I'm happy to just come back when I have more information, more complete set of information to present, um or can, you know, we can discuss whatever if you want to discuss.
I think that might make the most sense, given the hour. Um so um we'll we'll um when we get to that, future agenda planning, let's um we can add it to our um next uh future agenda. Um next, we um have JCPC representative. So the Joint Capital Planning Committee um in the town of Amherst um uh is is going to be convening, and we need, I think, two representatives um uh from the Amherst School Committee. Um I neglected to say during my chair's update, um so I'm going to take the opportunity right now that we also have two other appointments that we um that the Amherst School Committee needs to make. Um we won't do that tonight. Um but for the folks that are interested in, please email me, um and we can sort of make the interim appointment um uh there. So the those other two are the Amherst Media um Board Liaison, which I think then you have been doing that up until now. So um don't know if you're interested in continuing that, or if um any anybody else is interested in taking that on. Um we also need a I forget what the C stands for, is it the, oh Collaborative for Educational Services, or CES. Um we need an Amherst Committee representative on that board um as well. So that was um uh Hala Lord had been serving in that capacity for the Amherst School Committee until now. So we won't discuss those tonight. This is more just sort of an invitation to uh let me know. And if there's more than one person that's interested in any either of those, then we'll add this on the agenda for the next one. Um so JCPC representative, uh Peter had been that. Um so I don't know if you want to give a quick update on on what that role entails, um time commitment. Um and I believe you you had been one of our two representatives before, so I don't know if you're interested in continuing that.
Yeah, so um basically JCPC, Joint Capital Planning Committee, um is a couple of reps from here and the library and uh the town council. It's basically, it's it's an advisory board, technically, it's an advisory board to the town manager. And so the town manager typically comes in with the help of the finance director and says, okay, here's the town's capital plan for next fiscal year. And it's 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 fairly detailed in terms of line items for, you know, this is how much we're spending on roads and potholes, and this is you know, what the schools are asking for and whatever. Um and uh and then the 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 structure has evolved a little bit, but basically um that we review that plan is also, as well as like a three to five year plan more recently, that's been a bit of a focus. Um and uh and so it's about one to two hour meetings, maybe hour and a half, and I think there were about six of them. Um I think they start up fairly soonish and then go through, well, they have to go through um through uh have to be done before we propose our our budget with the capital. Um and it's 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 a like, so Doug will come to one of the meetings and say, okay, here's the school stuff, and then give some slides and spreadsheets, and then people pepper in with questions. And the library people come and the town people come, and you sort of talk in general terms about that. Um so it's a way for us to it's 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 good for us, because, you know, we're so siloed most of the time, thinking about school stuff. So it's it's good to to experience that we're one part of of the larger budget. So I find it educational in that respect. It it doesn't have authority, really. I mean, you so it's the 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 action items that you produce a report as a recommendation, which which then the town manager takes under advisement. Um so it's, you know, it's influential, but it's not, there's no like technical authority to it.
Volunteers. Did they meet in the mornings or the evenings, Peter?
I think last time it was evenings, but it's I mean, what Sean has typically done is just email people and say what works for you, and then so it could it could be different. Um yeah.
Jennifer.
I would like to volunteer.
Thank you. There others? Peter?
Um I I I'm willing to do it. I've done it a couple of years, so I could I could take a breather, but if if after this meeting, nobody steps up, then I'll fill the void. How's that?
Okay, so we'll move on. Um if uh Erv or Ben would like to volunteer after the fact with more time to think on it, um let me know. Erv.
Uh yeah, I guess, you know, it's you know, the JCP is not something that I'm really enthused about, uh because I don't think it really utilizes all of my expertise. But I would not want to see Peter continue. Uh so um I will I will do that. I mean, and and the other thing is, it's really good we're having this conversation, because I was beginning to feel like a uh like a fifth wheel here, you know, uh you know, we we're new. And but we have no committee assignments to anyone, to any of the committees. So this is the first time it is coming up. So I was wondering when it was going to happen, and now it is happening. Uh but I think that if I were looking at this in a more holistic w- way, uh you know, I would prefer that it had been done in in other kinds of of manner.
We do have the the two other opportunities, the the Collaborative for Educational Services and the um Amherst Media rep um from from the Amherst School Committee, but the Amherst School Committee doesn't have subcommittees generally. Um so hence the uh that uh. So um, okay, so I take that as a as a yes. If you if you have second thoughts about it, let me know, and we can.
Yeah, or I just said I would do it for the
You're doing, okay.
For the Joint Capital Planning.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, it also just occurred to me that uh technically, this committee has a representative CPAC. So I'm currently on that, and I love doing it, but uh you were mentioning some uh I'm doing it, but uh you were mentioning some uh of these these other single points of of appointment. Um so I don't know if uh if you want to, I just want to throw it out there that like
Yep.
That's another opportunity. So if there are
We're moving um I'm going to move us into our next agenda, which is future agenda planning. So given that we have several um of these appointments, um why don't I'm I'll send an email out to the committee just listing what these appointments are. Um and so so that folks have time to think about them, um ask questions um in between about what they might be. And then at the at our February meeting, um I might recommend that we go through those those other appointments that we need to make. So it's CPAC, um CES and Amherst Media. Um and if there's any others that um I'm forgetting right now, I'll include those in the list. Does that sound um like a plan? Okay. Um so in addition to that, on the eighth, um we'll have our um again, another update from the school building. I believe that's when we'll have the ed- education plan presentation um as well. Um we'll come back to charter costs, this uh FY twenty three budget presentation um as well as um the community and the public input follow up, continuation on public input.
Yeah, just just a note that I think one item on the regional meeting, which is February first, would be uh I think will be a joint item. There was a this was talked about maybe a month or two ago, that there's a we um we asked for someone who is a longtime principal, now coaching principal, to take a look at um transparency in our district and challenges of being a school leader in our community. He uh interviewed a a number of current school leaders, as well as prior or former school leaders in our district. He's compiled a report, and um he's willing to come and present it, but I'd like him to ask him only to present it once. Um so you'll all be there anyway, um for another reason, but uh you know, just I just want to note that there's probably one item on that February first meeting that will be a joint item, because it relates to both uh both districts. So just wanted to note um both for the public as well as the committee members that, you know, they might wonder why.
Thank you for reminding me on that. Um and we'll also have our school choice hearing um on the eighth, and that's uh the hearing uh in preparation for voting on accepting school choice students. Um we are also proposing adding a meeting on the twenty second of February. It would be a brief meeting, but that would be for the vote on the education plan. Um because otherwise, our next meeting is not until March. Um so that's uh potentially add. So February twenty second is a newly added meeting. Jennifer, did you have your hand raised?
No. I was dropped.
Did I forget anything for the eighth? Nope. Okay. Um next is warrant report. Oh, and somebody attached all of these. Um wonderful. Um so this is actually another one that we can add to our appointment list. I've been serving as the as the delegate for the school committee to um sign uh uh warrants and payroll warrants. Um and so uh we can add that to our list of um appointments. Um for now, I will read. Uh it looks like there's a lot here. Um so I'm just going to click through the ones that are listed. Um I, Allison McDonald, authorized uh payroll in the amount of negative eight hundred and ninety seven dollars, um dated November third, twenty twenty one. Um and I signed that on December twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. I, Allison McDonald, authorized payroll in the amount of five hundred and sixty six dollars and eleven cents, dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty one. And I signed that on December twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of two hundred and eighty six thousand, six hundred and eighty two dollars and thirty one cents for a warrant dated December seventeenth, twenty twenty one. This includes general fund expenses of forty one thousand, six hundred and eighty one dollars and fifty eight cents, revolving fund expenses of fifteen thousand, twenty one dollars and fifty two cents, grant fund expenses of seven hundred and eighty three dollars and sixty nine cents, ESR funds of three thousand, nine hundred and fifty three dollars and ninety four cents, and a gift of two hundred and forty nine dollars and fifty four cents. And I signed that on December seventeenth, twenty twenty one. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of two hundred and eighty six thousand, six hundred and eighty two dollars and thirty one cents for a warrant dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty one. This includes general fund expenses of a hundred and seventy three thousand, two hundred and sixty five dollars and thirty seven cents, revolving fund expenses of sixty two thousand, five hundred and ninety six dollars and sixty one cents, grant fund expenses of nine thousand, twenty two dollars and forty eight cents, ESR funds of forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty one dollars and eighty six cents, miscellaneous funds of seven hundred and sixteen dollars and forty five cents, and a gift of two hundred and forty nine dollars and fifty four cents. I signed that on December sixteenth, twenty twenty one. I uh authorized payroll in the amount of seven hundred and twenty seven thousand, ninety three dollars and ninety seven cents, dated January twelfth, twenty twenty two. I signed that today, January eleventh, twenty twenty two. Two more. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of fifty four thousand two hundred and forty four dollars and sixteen cents for a warrant dated December twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. This included general fund expenses of twenty two thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and eighty one cents, revolving fund expenses of nine thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars, grant fund expenses of twenty two thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and thirty five cents. And that's it. And I signed that on January ninth, twenty twenty two. And last, but I'm sure not least, yep, um I authorized payroll in the amount of seven hundred and forty one thousand. Uh this appears to be a typo. Let me see if I can find seven hundred and yeah, there's there's four digits after the comma. So it's uh seven hundred and forty one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and seventy seven cents. Um uh dated December twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, and I signed that on January fourth, twenty twenty two. And that is everything. Uh next, we have gifts. Um and we do have a gift document there, and I'm going to look to somebody else to do the speaking. Somebody like to make a motion? Here. Oh, raised her hand. I'm going to go with it. Okay, Peter.
Oh, all right. Um uh I move to approve the following gifts from Special Olympics Massachusetts, Inc. To support five hundred dollars each to Crocker Farm, Fort River, and Wildwood for Unified Champion Schools UCS expenses, see enclosed. Teacher coach stipends for events, equipment supplies in support of UCS activities, uniforms, and transportation in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Peter, second by Jennifer. Is there any discussion? Mike?
This is just, uh you may remember, there was a presentation last year um by Brittany at the high school about expanding this program to all the schools uh around accessibility. And this is uh we, at that point, we said we were applying for this funds. Uh thanks to Brittany and and other people's good work, we received uh the grant, and this is the result. So, you know, things eventually do loop back, sometimes just takes a little while. Um but for those who were on the committee last year, might remember Brittany's presentation, and this is uh the outcome.
Special Olympics is an organization near and dear to my heart, as my sister was an athlete all of her life, um literally. Um and I know the unified sports very well, so it's exciting. As I will move to a roll call vote, um Ben.
Ben, I.
Erv.
Erv, I.
Jennifer.
Jennifer, I.
Peter.
Peter, I.
Allison, I. I should include myself in that shaking things up and not always go last also. And with that, does anybody want to make a motion?
I move adjourned.
Second. And there's no discussion. No. Allison, I. Uh Erv.
Erv, I.
Ben.
Ben, I. We'll go Ben, I.
Peter.
Now you got me thinking. Uh Peter, I.
Thanks. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.